We have to stand.
This ought to be good.
And you are live.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize for a scratchy voice. Hopefully, you can understand me. Welcome today to today's Board of Selectmen meeting, Monday, October 1st, 2018. And we'll open this meeting at 6:37. And if you'd all stand and rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes, thank you so much. You don't have the box of Kleenex anywhere, do you?
I do.
Okay. We'll begin with the public comments, seeing as there are none, and I will move right on to the approval warrants. Selectmen Wood, would you do me a favor and would you, uh...
Stand.
Would you do... Thank you so much.
I come prepared.
Yeah, where are the numbers? At the bottom?
Could you do the, uh, warrant approvals, Robbie? I don't know if I could.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Let me just open that up. All right, so motion to approve payroll warrant number 19-13 in the amount of $158,127.08.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 19-12 in the amount of $59,384.67.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 19-13 in the amount of $1,104,302.33. And we have the breakout as town was $29,098.80. Water and sewers, $10,648.92. Payroll withholdings, $31,597.90. Light bills, $154,332.71. Capital grants and revolving, $83,651.34. I have a chapter 90 number.
We don't have a chapter 90.
It's listed on here.
It's just a placeholder. But we don't have any on this one.
Zero. Kentucky Assessment, $794,972.66.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yes.
Terrific. Thank you, Selectmen Wood. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So we'll move along to discussion and possible votes. We have Christopher Shramko of 488 Main Street, Groveland, addressing the use of the firing range for the Central Massachusetts Space Modeling Society's monthly testing. Do we have, uh, Mr. Shramko here?
Yes.
Okay, welcome. I guess you're looking to use the firing range in Central for your testing. Have you been in contact with the chief of police? Does he have any reservations about that request?
No, I've spoken to the chief of police, and he thinks it would be a good use for the facility. And I explained a little what was going on, brought a video, and to show him what the testing looks like. And invited him to come to one of our sessions to see, but he has not accepted that invitation as of yet.
Okay, uh, yes, Selectmen Wood.
When are you planning this? I'm assuming it's multiple times down there?
It would be approximately once every month, usually on a Saturday, sometimes on a Sunday. Duration should be no more than 10 to 4. I would think that's what our testing usually runs right now.
And what type of rockets are you... I'm assuming this would be part of it, but what type of rockets are you going to be...
There are hobby rocket motors, both black powder and ammonium perchlorate. They're sold in hobby shops around the country. I'm a member of the Standards and Testing Committee. There are three in North America, different standards and testing committees, that must test and approve the motors at least once every three-year per model of motor to make sure that they're safe for sale and use, and that they're consistent with the manufacturer's specifications.
So that's what you're doing down there, is testing those?
Yes, they'll be locked into a test harness that's on the ground, held down with cinder blocks, and, um, we have equipment...
Remotely ignited.
Remotely ignited, electrically. We'll have equipment recording the statistics.
So the one, the solid one, is a cardboard wrapping, right, with the fuel inside of it?
Yes, there's three different examples that I brought. There's cardboard wrapping with, uh, black powder, and then there's either plastic or metal wrappings with ammonium perchlorate.
Okay. Yeah, I'm familiar with the cardboard ones. I think those are the ones I used when I was way younger.
So we have a video if you'd like to see.
I'm wondering if the video would help, uh, help us with the...
Do you ever play with rockets when you were little?
Maybe we should start with that.
Yeah, it's quite quick, so...
Five, four, three, two, one.
So that is a video of a manufacturer testing at their facility. And then after they do their testing, it goes through safety testing and then comes to us for consistency testing.
You never played with rockets when you were younger?
No.
I did. They were fun. I mean, they're not, you know, if you're just testing them, they're, you know, pretty much harmless, but...
Which I had, probably would have kept me out of some trouble.
Or not.
Or not. Maybe got me some off. Um, yes.
So I did meet with Chris, um, last week, and while they're looking to do this monthly, the likelihood is they wouldn't be ready to start here probably till the spring. Um, I think they're still trying to get some stuff in order. Um, they wouldn't test normally throughout the winter. Um, so I think the plan would be to get your approval, then to get us all the insurance and get us all the permit requests to then be ready to go in the springtime. Is that correct, Chris?
Correct.
Yes, Selectmen Wood.
I'm assuming you have to give the police some kind of notice or timeframe of notice period before you're going to be down there? Is that...
Yes. Typically, we, we have our schedules, uh, three months in advance. And when I spoke to the police chief, we agreed that we'd give him a month, a month's notice...
Okay, good.
To be sure that there's no conflict with time.
Good, yeah. That's it.
Selectmen Wood, questions?
So is this like a 100% like a voluntary position you're in? I mean, is it...
Correct, it's an unpaid position.
Unpaid position. So you're doing it as a voluntary-type thing to just test the stuff?
Yes.
Okay. Um, no, that's about it. I mean, it doesn't seem like it's noisy. Doesn't think it's going to bother the neighborhood. Um, the only reason I was mentioning that, if it was, if it costs us some money to put that thing in, and I know they're always trying to expand that firing range if we could find some revenue to help them out down there, but if it's voluntary, then there's nothing we can do to help them there, I guess. But no, I think we're good. Thank you.
Selectmen Watson.
No, the only question I have, it certainly won't be any more noise than when they're, um, they're doing their practice, uh, their firearms training. It wouldn't be any, it wouldn't be any louder than that.
Correct.
I'm just thinking what the neighbors will say. Okay, thank you. That's all I got. Thank you.
Now, you will be launching rockets.
We will not be launching rockets. Everything will be held down in a test, test bed.
Will be just testing engines?
Yes.
I have no further questions. Do we just need to vote on, um, approval pending, uh, paperwork, insurance, certificates, permits, things like that?
Yes, that would be fine. And then I schedule the space like I do with all the fields, so, um, I'll have the police request, and then when they're using it, we'll have that blocked off. Yep.
Okay, I guess we just need a motion to move this forward?
I'll make a motion. We, uh, we approve Chris Shramko, will I pronounce that correctly?
Correct.
Uh, requesting to use the firing range for the Central Massachusetts Space Modeling Society's monthly testing.
Seconded.
We have a motion at a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, and hopefully it's successful and they mean something to someone somewhere.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, we have Mike Davis, the Chair of the Open Space and Trails Committee and Engineers from Stantec to discuss the following: community trail update and required turtle mitigation. Welcome, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to provide an update on the Groveland Community Trail project. So Denise, if you could, um, just move these along. Maybe just back one, I'm sorry. To the... So just for the folks listening at home and those in the room and anybody interested in the project, there's a couple places that I would recommend checking out online, one being the website, grovelandcommunitytrail.org, and number two is we have a Facebook page, facebook.com/grovelandcommunitytrail, for ongoing updates. Those would be the two places that would supplement the update that we'll give you at this point in time tonight. So you can move on. So we'll spend the time tonight just quickly refreshing some of the key individuals who are leading the project, both in the town and from Stantec. We'll review quickly kind of how we got here, the project to this point in time. This has gone on now for a few years. I noticed new faces on this board and new, new folks in town. I think it's just a quick summary of kind of how we got to this point. And then use the balance of the time for our partners at Stantec to talk through the current design status and some of the next steps to bring us over the finish line. And we'll wrap up, and we'll talk about this throughout. There's a couple asks for this board that we'll need your support on to move this through So, so myself and Denise, me being the current Chair of the Open Space and Trails Committee, along with Denise, we are the co-stewards of this project through the CPC process as we've gone through town meetings and secured funding. John and Elise, and they'll speak in a minute, they are our partners from Stantec, and they've been with us for the last, what, three, three or four years?
Yes.
Just for, for reference, a couple of critical stakeholders in the process to this point and moving forward, a couple with vested interests in the project being Merrimack Valley Plan and Commission, who's the entity that doles out the money at the regional level, Mass DOT, who assigns the funding from the federal level, and a certain amount of this every year goes towards alternative transportation projects like this one, National Grid, who owns the right of way in question, and Natural Heritage, which is uniquely interested in some of these rare species, which we'll talk about. And other partners, as we've tried to be as inclusive as possible, along the Board of Selectmen, DPW, conservation, local businesses, budding property owners. We've tried to incorporate input as we've gone along, and I think moving forward, but these are the people who have had input to this point and will continue as this goes along. So next slide. So just, just very quickly to recap, what is the Groveland Community Trail? So it's a proposed shared-use path. It will be paved, and it will run approximately two miles from starting at the substation at King Street, along the National Grid corridor, all the way to 441 Main Street, which is the former SD Lumber property. And that makes one major crossing at the School Street and Center Street intersection near the Bagnell School. So it's that power line corridor that we're proposing and that this project will begin and end at King Street to Main Street and be a paved, shared-use, non-motorized path. The vision of the project all along is to empower a more connected Groveland, and with a mission to really sustainably provide safe scenic outdoor recreation and pedestrian transportation for all ages and abilities. So this, this project, we believe, is very appealing to a wide range of people. And the things that'll connect physically in town, things like the Bagnell School, the improvements that we've just seen on Route 97, the Center Street Greenway, Shanahan Field, Groveland Center, Home Park, these are all things that this trail will physically help connect through pedestrian transportation. The main funding aspects, the town bears the burden for the design costs, the state then picks up the costs to build the trail. So we've invested to this point about $350,000. This has come 100% from CPA funds. We haven't raised any taxes. This has come from the CPA program. And construction funds will be paid from, from DOT in the tune of, of over $2 million. It'll depend on what year this is actually funded in with inflation. But the return on the investment from our design to the construction funding is quite high. We, we've kept a very public front to this. We've had very strong public support from outside entities like the MVPC, Essex National Heritage, we've got our local representatives in Senator Tar and Rat Mira. They've been very supportive and vocal of the project, and one local business in Chesterton who has stepped up with support for future volunteer maintenance. We've, at a town level, gone through three town meeting votes annually, annual town meetings, and we've secured $150,000, $150,000, and $55,000 for the different stages of the design. And ongoing, we've tried to be as, as public as possible. We had early public forums, we've had a design public hearing with the state, we've had multiple opportunities to be in front of this board, we've had a Facebook page. We've, we've been very transparent with the progress as we've gone along. And one question that came up early and which, which was heard was the need for maintenance. So our plan is to follow the model that we've seen in other towns, where we, we would have a mile marker sponsorship program, where every quarter, eighth of a mile, tenth of a mile, what have you, we would have opportunities for local and regional businesses to advertise to offset the minimal costs for maintenance. And there'll also obviously be a mix of paid and volunteer support, and there's different, different avenues for both of those. We do have a nonprofit entity set up in the Friends of the Groveland Community Trail for, for future use for, for that. Question though? Sorry.
No, 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 no.
Um, so to visually kind of orient folks of where the trail is going to be, and really the scope of this discussion and this project right now is the orange. So want to focus on that orange piece. That's the trail from, from diagonally to the left, King Street down at the south and Main Street at the north, and in the middle at that yellow star is the Bagnell School. That's, that's the trail. For context, in the future, there'll be, at the north and south in the green dotted lines, the connections into Bradford at the north, into Georgetown at the south. And what this will open up is, at the south, opportunity to connect into the borders to Boston, projects that are happening in Topsfield and Wenham and Danvers.
Bloxford, Georgetown, Newbury, Salisbury.
And to the north, Bradford and Haverhill are building their trail, starting at the train station. If you've seen their rail trail, they're coming this way eventually. They're going to connect into our trail at the SD property. And that one piece in blue is the one piece that we've yet to design fully for, but we do have funding set aside for, which is the extension that'll take us across Main Street through the SD property to Johnson's Creek. And we'll have to settle a bridge situation with Haverhill, but they're, they're involved in discussions and supportive of, of the connection. So that's the visual quick orientation. And then the future, I guess the piece at the top in the, in the blue, there is a potential for on-road, on-road component to this project in the future, most likely funded through either highway improvements on Route 113, as they improve that, that street or, or road, and through Complete Streets, which is a funding program that we at the town can enter into for sidewalk and other improvements. So that blue stretch goes from Shanahan Field, effectively SD Lumber, to Bates Bridge up to Town Hall. So the idea is in the future, with right now a very strong backbone in that orange piece, to have a, a pretty connected network through the town of Groveland. Go ahead, next slide I'll begin. And this is my last slide. This, this, there's a lot of other milestones. These are the major milestones to date, just to, to orient folks of how this project has, has come along. So 2012, the Merrimack Valley Plan and Commission funded a feasibility study based on some open space survey data that the town did, showing support for this project. So in 2012, the project was deemed feasible. We then started to cascade our actions at the town level to pursue funding for a 25% design plan. We entered into an RFP. Stantec became our partner on that front. We initially reviewed title also in 2014 to show a clear right of way, as our attorneys already given us their opinion, that the right of way is fully owned by National Grid. There's no, no private owners that'll be impacted by this. We updated the board a couple times in 2015 and 2016. We had another town meeting vote in 2015 there, and then multiple public forums back in 15, building awareness in these early stages. We submitted the 25% design and got our project ID back in 2016, had our third town meeting vote that year to get that last $55,000. We were originally assigned into the tip, which is the funding queue for the project in fiscal year 2019, and you'll see in a second when we've gotten bumped back to 2021. But we did do a site walk with DOT in 2016. We had a design public hearing in this room with Mass DOT in 2017. And then Stantec, this year, most recently in September, submitted the 100% design plan to both National Grid and Mass DOT. So we've accelerated our timeline since 2014 to this point. We do have two obstacles in front of us. Both are quite straightforward, but both require the attention of, of this board and partnership to work through this together. So one being turtles. We do now understand how we're impacting some turtle habitats, so we'll talk through that in a minute. And then National Grid, the, the trigger to enter into the, the final permission to build this trail is a 99-year lease agreement with National Grid. And we have other towns that we have the copies of their lease, and Denise has been very helpful to get this to town council and start that process to understand what is that lease agreement going to look like. So I'll, I'll quickly pause there if there's questions about the recap, and then we'll move into kind of the current status and next steps.
Yes, Selectmen Wood, do you have a question?
What does the 99-year lease entail?
I would defer to Denise.
So it's almost like an easement. National Grid will give us use of that property. Lease agreements, municipal, it's 99 years. So it's fairly standard...
I get that, but what happens after that?
Well, you would just renew it. I mean, it's fairly standard.
Although perpetual?
Yes, you can continually renew it, you just can't exceed 99 years.
All right, so it's perpetual, but the, the maximum is 99 years?
Correct.
Okay.
And to obtain, I'll just add on to that, to obtain the federal funding through MassDOT for construction, it would need to be, Federal Highway prefers a 99-year lease as the maximum just to show that the investment is protected for the long term.
Okay. So for liability, if we take the 99-year lease on, do we take any liability on that trail as a town, seeing we're now, we're now holding the lease or whatever, or...
Right, so the trail would be the town of Groveland on National Grid's property. So yes.
So we would have to somehow find a way to insure that for liability?
Well, it's open space, so all open space is covered by our insurance policies.
Okay.
You don't...
So it would cover it.
Right, you don't need to insure each individual park or thing, so that would just fall under our insurance.
All right. All right, good for now.
Selectmen Watson?
No, I don't have any questions.
So to update everyone on where we're at, we just submitted the 100% design to MassDOT this September. Ultimately, through multiple meetings with the stakeholders that Mike has mentioned, we came to a design that would be the best and ultimately takes into account all the concerns from Natural Heritage regarding the impacts to habitat, as well as National Grid's concerns of having a trail on their corridor. They have certain requirements that they like to keep consistent, just so they can still provide maintenance for their facilities and it doesn't impact them. So through those meetings, we came up with a design that we think is, is good to move forward to final. So we arrived at an eight-foot-wide paved surface. Originally, we had proposed a 10-foot-wide paved surface. However, once we got into discussions with Natural Heritage, we would have to mitigate in some way for all of the square foot of impacts that we would be impacting to the area that's mapped within that habitat. And therefore, we decided that it would be best to narrow the width of the trail in order to decrease those, the mitigation that we would need to perform or that the town would need to perform to get this project to move forward. It also, as part of that, we decided to increase the amount of wood rail fence in areas of the habitat in order to encourage folks to stay on the trail and not veer off and further impact the habitat. So ultimately, we got to that point with coordination with both Natural Heritage and National Grid. And our next submission, submission from here would be plans, specs, and estimate, or PSNE, and that would be what MassDOT would use for advertisement. So in order to advertise the plans, there's these two, two main things that Mike has mentioned that we would need in order for MassDOT to sign off and sign it over to Federal Highway, would be the environmental permitting would all need to be signed off on, and then the 99-year lease agreement will need to be in place in order for DOT to get the right-of-way certificate. So if you want to go to the next slide. So this is just a summary of that. So environmental permits are consisting of having to go to the Groveland Conservation Commission for a Notice of Intent filing, working with Natural Heritage to do a conservation management permit, and then we are likely through this triggering an ENF, an environmental notification form, which would be through MEPA. And that usually goes hand in hand with the NOI process and with the conservation management permit, so that's kind of a joint effort for those three permits. Each of them would have slightly different timeframes and time durations, but since we have a design that's final and is not, is not going to change, we know what the impacts are, and this would be the time that we would pursue those. And then additionally, the 99-year lease with National Grid to, in order to obtain the right of way, for lack of a better term, for the trail. And then there's also been ongoing utility coordination, specifically with the Groveland Water and Sewer Department. As part of MassDOT's summits, they ask for utility submissions, and they send summits out to all utilities that are within the town or within the project area. And Tom, I believe, is on the agenda for tonight following us. He's going to be speaking in more detail about this, but he is basically trying to coordinate with the future plans for the town's sewer master planning efforts. So that's within the vicinity of this project, so it's being brought forward. So I'll table that for his discussion later, and I'll just continue with explaining this. So just delving a little deeper into the environmental permitting, so that everyone understands. Natural Heritage has identified that the project is located within priority habitat. I gave each of the selectmen, Denise also has a copy of this graphic, which just shows you, the trail is highlighted in orange. I'll face this way so everyone can see. Oh, yeah, and then there's one up there. The trail's highlighted in orange. All of the green and yellow hatching are areas of priority or estimated habitat as matched, yeah, as identified as from Natural Heritage. And then what we also did on here was, as part of this process and coordination with them, there has been other projects in town, per se, that Natural Heritage has been involved in, and knowing the amount of turtles that need to be mitigated for, they have identified some areas that's town-owned land that is ultimately suitable for these mitigations. So just for, for reference, the majority of the trail actually falls within the habitat. And so therefore, anything within our wood rail fence limits, meaning the trail, the shoulders, and the wood rail fence, is what is considered impact. So there are two different types of turtles, one of which is considered, I'll say, more endangered than the other, and there needs to be mitigation for that in order to proceed with the project. So we are impacting, for example, on this project, we are impacting two and a half acres of wood turtle habitat, and therefore, we need to mitigate for that somewhere else in town in order for Natural Heritage to approve. If you want to go back one slide, just to the, the description, so ultimately, what we are doing is we, we worked with Natural Heritage to come up with a calculation for what would be considered suitable mitigation or net benefit mitigation in order to pursue this, how much acreage we would need in town to meet that. We came up with a number. We actually sat here and had a meeting one day with everyone, all stakeholders, and talked about what that would be, and we came to the conclusion that eight acres of mitigation would be required to mitigate this in town. And I believe that that takes into account some of the other projects that the town has been working on, that there perhaps wasn't proper mitigation or enough mitigation previously. So as part of this, those eight acres, we need a conservation restriction on them of some sort in order to protect turtle habitat for the future to make up for what is impacted here. And then, again, Natural Heritage had identified this Center Street parcel, which is in blue. It's all these parcels that, they were showing up as separate parcels on GIS, but they're all town-owned. And they identified that these parcels were suitable for that habitat. So the idea would be to take eight acres of this area and put it under a conservation restriction in order to mitigate for these turtles. Does that make sense before I move on? Yes.
So we have to give up eight acres of town land...
Right.
...for 2.5 acres of turtle land?
Correct.
Because of the rare species, it's, it's not a one-for-one.
It's a more...
It's a higher ratio.
I know, it's a calculation.
Well, so let me just, I'm going to jump in for a moment by looking at the map. So we did meet here, there was about eight or 10 of us for an entire day, sitting around this table discussing this. The reality is, the Center Street property is the ideal location from Natural Heritage point of view to mitigate. We are required to mitigate for the firing range, which we have not done. That's been something that's been in the works since we started building the firing range. So that's why the eight acres also comes into play. It's for what we did with the firing range. But if you look at the map, and I'm not sure if I can actually draw on here, let me see what I got here. So the firing range, is that coming out?
There's that little dab.
There you go, there you go.
Okay, so, maybe I can do a different color. So the firing range area to mitigate, I believe we're looking at this section, sorry, like this section here, right behind the firing range to the trail corner, not counting the Mattingly property. Is that the Mattingly, Mike, that abuts that? Or is that Angellini? That's Mattingly, right? So that's already under a CR. So that's sort of, like, the eight acres is in that corner, which the likelihood of us being able to build anything in that area is slim anyways because of the turtle population. So while it might be eight acres, it still would leave the majority of the parcel untouched of the main 150 Center Street that could still be developed and utilized by the town going forward. The hope would be that by mitigating these eight acres now, adding it to the existing CR that already exists on the adjacent parcel, that, you know, we may need to work with Natural Heritage in the future, but we might not need to do any further mitigation if we sort of encompass this area now.
So the area you were talking about right now, is that maroon area up in the corner?
Yeah, it don't, my drawing's a little crazy.
Yeah, no, I get it. So, if you were to take that away, is that's under a restriction already, right now?
It is not.
So we're now taking that and putting it under restriction?
Correct. So you would add it to the restriction?
So that land?
Okay, so it would be added to sort of this parcel, which is already under restriction. So here's the solar field.
That's what I'm asking, so everything in blue is restricted?
No. That was the identified suitable habitat town-owned parcels.
Right.
It's the green and the yellow.
Right, the green.
That's where the habitat exists now.
Right, so see here, this, oh.
No, I get it. So what I'm saying is, we're not taking any of the blue away.
We're taking, we're taking part of it, we're not taking it away, but this piece here is already turtle habitat.
So that's already being restricted?
So, well, it's not being restricted.
It's not yet, but it could be.
Right.
But it's unlikely that they'd ever let us build anything there, given the fact that that is sensitive turtle habitat. So if we have to restrict part of this, that makes sense. Also here, you'll see there's turtle, so this is where the firing range is. So if we sort of put a buffer around the firing range in this corner here, seems to make the most sense. Again, it's already endangered area, and it counts, we sort of protect the firing range from building right up against it, we protect the turtles, and then it leaves the rest of this whole parcel.
So people watching this right now, so they understand, the yellow, the orange line going through the top of the blue is where the trail's going through, so
Correct.
We got to give that land back someplace. So their proposal is to give the land back around where the fire range is, where that, where you had that maroon, to give that land back.
Yes, because if you see from here all the way, this is all endangered area.
Right, right.
And then all the way through here, it's all turtle habitat.
Right, so you are giving that land back over there, you're swapping, basically swapping.
We're protecting it, so it's still town-owned, but we are protecting it, yes.
What is the chance of where that rail trail is, to come into that blue land in the future? If they ever wanted to come in with the rail trail, to come in and use 150 Center Street? Is there any restrictions on that right now? Because we talked about passive recreation, and et cetera, et cetera.
Right, so you could.
It seems like we're wedging away and wedging away at this land.
That's what I was getting at. How much money do we pay for that? Now all of a sudden, we've got, you know, an acre we can build on.
Right, for now, it's just getting wedged away and wedged away. I just want to be careful on how we keep wedging away at this. Town people have a lot of money invested. I want to be able to, hopefully someday, let them use it.
Right, but keep in mind, so this parcel here is already under conservation restriction.
So they'll never be able to come through there with even a passive trail?
No, this was passive, this is passive recreation that we discussed. Nothing motorized, but you could have walking trails.
You could have a horse.
This parcel is already, this is the aquifer parcel, correct, Mike? Is that, so this is the parcel that we have also a CR on. So this was the parcel anyways that's always been in question. This front parcel here is what the town, those 60, almost 62 acres, is really what we've been discussing anyways, that the town and the selectmen sort of oversee.
That was the busing property.
Correct. So the other two properties are already off the table, if you will. So this would take eight acres of the 62 and add that into the protection area. It still leaves you with a very large portion all along Center Street is still available for future use.
But my point is, we gave the back parcels, correct me if I'm wrong, to the water for the wells. So we wedged that off already, and the wells got that piece. So now we got rid of that, that's now become restricted, and what have you. So now we're going to give off another piece. So short and long of it, what is this land going to be able to be used for, just passive recreation?
Well, now you're, now you're, you're right. And so of the 62, you know, what, next year, what's going to be taken off of it?
Right, but the money that you, the taxpayer spent is, was only this front parcel. These were purchased by CPA funds, state grants, so these were separate all along.
So we can't do anything with it anyways?
We couldn't do anything anyways. These are separate parcels. This is the one that we paid the $3.7 million for.
Right.
This is the one that we've discussed in the past about maybe putting fields, or affordable housing, or whatever, on that site. So that's really the only one you could discuss anyways.
Right, but what I'm getting at, so go back to what you just said, so let's just say they want to do something with that busing property. I don't want to surround it, completely surround it, and then we want to go use it down the road, when you can't use it, because now it's been all wedged out with all this land.
Right, but you could still.
And that's all I'm saying, because there's a 100-foot buffer and everything else, 200-foot buffers, whatever, all your buffers now make that from 62 acres to maybe 20 acres or whatever, you know what I mean?
I mean, you still would have 54 acres here that can be used. I mean, this, the Center Street, right along Center Street is all still available. So you're not going to need to do anything here to protect, you know, maybe the very corner down here, but you still have the whole center. So unfortunately, in order for this trail to move forward, we need to mitigate these turtles.
I got you.
We went, we had a map, we had a giant map of the town. There's really no place else. They want it to be as close to the current habitat as possible. We're really limited on options, to be honest with you.
Okay, so what I'm saying to you is, and to Mike, and to Mike, if we go and we say, that piece of land, can we use it for passive recreation and stuff?
Yes.
To come from the rail trail, if we wanted to do a bandstand, or we wanted to do something recreational on that front piece of land, we still can do it. We're not saying, okay, well, no, there's turtles here, we can't go through here no more, end of story, you can't go through there, there's turtles. We can still use it for passive recreation, a pathway, or something to connect that front parcel to the back parcel.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's why currently, people can come in and walk through here. That's why we can build a trail through it. That's passive recreation.
I'm talking, I'm thinking more of a structure possibly, or a, I'm not saying buildings, I'm saying recreation.
So you could build something right here. You could build a hatch shell right here, Bill.
Something recreational.
You could build a hatch shell and have bands perform, and have, you know, an exit off the rail trail if you want.
Right, so what I'm thinking, if you put a rail trail in, you tie the rail trail to this property, because it seems to me like it's the only net property that's ever going to be used for, is something recreational. So now, down the future, do we have the town, you know, have a, whatever, and people can ride their bikes or whatever, come in and use it, tying that to that property? I see that's the only way you're going to make that property usable at this point.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't say that. You could certainly, you know, if it's the town's desire, you could certainly develop this property.
With what? I tried it once.
But then you're attracting, you're attracting people that want to be on the rail trail.
I've tried like three different options, and every time we turn, we can't borrow, we can't build anything because we borrowed the money in such a manner, you can't.
Right, you can't do it right now. It can still, in the future, you can certainly develop this land. We just can't do anything while we have tax-exempt bonds on it.
And how long would it take to get rid of the bonds?
They were 20-year bonds, so.
So in 20 years, we have this conversation all over again.
Correct, so I mean, there's not much that could be done right now.
So that's my point, that's my point, you know what I mean? My point, and I'm not trying to be, I'm not, I'm just trying to say it's frustrating because it's 20 years before you can do anything with that land, other than make it passive recreational, and that's what I'm saying. If this rail trail's going to go in five years, we ought to look at it, at least give the town people something for their money. And you can borrow CPA money for recreational, et cetera, et cetera, so why not do it? Why not use it? Because it's going to be 20 years before we do anything anyway with it.
You could use a piece right up here, so then it still leaves the Center Street, you know, that it leaves what's along Center Street, if you want to develop that in the future.
Right.
Yes. At some point, we will need to have a conversation, a more in-depth conversation about that parcel, and what it might look like in the future. Natural Heritage would like from us sort of a master plan of the parcel. You know, that's really not this conversation right now, but that's something that they would like to see, is what you might want to see there going forward, what, you know, ideas you might have for that parcel 10 and 15 years down the road. So that is something to think about, and you should start thinking about what you want to see here. Right now, we're really just talking about mitigating for the turtles.
Turtles come first, though. They always do.
I'm sorry, I'm off.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I've got a big question, because I feel like I've been put in, and I'm not really happy when that happens. Can we go back to that larger picture there?
Yeah.
It seems to me all the, the yellow and green is turtle habitat. Were we informed that that much of the area that we were buying, we weren't going to be able to use because it's turtle habitat, and we paid $3.7 million for this property? I don't recall that.
It's two different properties.
No, the busing, the busing.
I think he's referring to this and this.
This and that.
Okay.
We paid $3.7 million for that piece of property. I don't recall being told that a lot of this property was turtle habitat and may never be able to be used. Did I miss something?
What happened was, they went out and got, they went out and got cost analysis on that land, and what I remember happening was, they did say that that land has turtle, it's a turtle habit property, and that's why it needs to be sold the way it needed to be sold, because it needed to be protected. And that's why I think the people went to the voting box and voted the way they did, because they thought that was the only use of that land. So maybe I'm wrong, but they did tell us that, and they did, they told us it was in the watershed, it was turtle, you know, land, et cetera, et cetera, and that's how they got the people to vote the way they did, in my opinion.
And, and.
And they did get prices of the land.
Full disclosure, I don't remember that ever being discussed, that maybe a third of the $3.7 million we spent, we can never use, that would have been, that would have affected my group, and maybe a lot of other people.
Well, we have wells now, we have future wells. We have future wells up there.
Well, that's, that's on, on the.
Yeah, I got, yeah, top, up in the, up on the other pieces, yeah, I got it.
And that I understand, because that was purchased with CPA or, or water funds.
Yeah, I know, I know.
No impact to the town. Folks, Mike, go ahead, please.
The two main reasons why we purchased the property, and why I think people voted for it, was because of the aquifer. That was probably the main reason. I think Bill Dunn mentioned that. So in order to protect the aquifer, those three properties, Angellini, Matt former, Angellini former, Mattingly former, busing, were all right on top of the most important water source that we have for the town of Groveland. So I think that was the primary concern. The secondary concern was the habitat portion of the property, and that in particular is why the conservation restriction is placed on the former Mattingly and the former Angellini properties. And then the third reason was, as a future potential recreation area, and I think that's why the selectmen at the time decided to purchase it with bonding rather than using CPA funds, so it wouldn't be restricted as far as use. If we purchased it with CPA funds, we couldn't be using it for certain things, like a firing range, for instance. So you have a say, the selectmen have a say on how that 62 acres is used. But because it's in turtle habitat, you know, certain portions of it, no matter, no matter what you were going to put there, would be, come under the purview of Natural Heritage, who minds habitat. So, you know, if all of a sudden we were going to put a new high school there, a new school, fire department, and we wanted to put it in certain areas, we'd have to take into account habitat restrictions, like the same way you would have to take into account wetland buffers, you know? And again, like Bill said, you know, certain amount of property is subject to that. So I guess your question of why ultimately did we pay what we paid for it? The main reason that we paid what we paid for it was because that was what, it was appraised, the appraisal came in at. The appraisal came in at 3.65 million, 3.7 million, because there were upwards of 350 houses proposed to put on that property.
Proposed by who?
By the people who were going to develop it at the time. I don't recall who they were.
And were they aware that all these turtle habitats were there?
Oh, yes. They were, they went all through that.
And were they going to kill the turtles, or what?
No, they were going to, they were going to have to do the same thing we're doing now. They were going to have to come up with mitigation, you know, they maybe, they were looking at buying the back properties to use as mitigation for what they were going to do out front. So, you know, we can say, yeah, gee, that was expensive property, and indeed it was, but it was partly because somebody went through all the work they did to get all the permits they had to get in order to, to build something, and it was worth that kind of money.
I think, Bill, if I may.
Certainly.
So I think maybe at the beginning, it might have seemed to me to be worth that amount, but every time we have a meeting, or every other month, something comes up, and we lose the ability to use part of it, or an acre has to go to this, or we have to mitigate that, and all of a sudden, that land, like Bill was saying, shrinks, and shrinks, and shrinks, and then all of a sudden, the value of it diminishes, in my opinion.
Well, the only thing we've lost so far is the four acres of the firing range.
And you said it right now, so far.
Right, and so we're talking about another eight acres that is going.
Just another eight acres, so far, so that's 12.
For the trail, right.
Right, so far.
So I, I don't think we expected to do the fire range, but certainly, the eight acres that is being set aside, probably at least half of that you could never build in any way because of wetland buffers. So it isn't, you know, right now, we're down to approximately 50 acres. 50 acres of nice, clean, flat land that has quite a bit of frontage on Center Street, certainly could be used for many things that the town needs.
Okay, so, forgive me, because I'm colored by, and I can't tell the difference of those colors up there, but what are the setbacks of those?
There's minimal setbacks on that, because there's, in that center of that property, there's, there's only one small wetland, it's kind of near Bill Dunn's property, who knows where it is.
Is it, is, no, it's right, we're Center Street, it says street, go down, right in there, there's my land. It buffers all around that, right in there, yep, right in there.
What, 100 feet, 200 feet?
There's only 100 feet, feet on that.
All the way around, right?
Yeah.
So that takes away what?
That might take away, I don't know, another acre, acre and a half.
All right, so now we're up to 13 or 14. And again, like I said, I don't mean to be flip, but every time we come in here and we talk about this property, and what's associated with it, and what we can, and specifically, what we can't do about it, we lose use cases and the ability to do anything down there.
Well.
And that's the point. I mean, I know we're, we're restricted up the wazoo on what we can do in certain areas, and I know the rail trail's important to a lot of people, and they put a lot of time and effort into this, but I'm saying, it's very frustrating when the town puts money and effort and resources into buying something like that, and the use gets smaller, and smaller, and smaller, and smaller.
Well, I think that you are confusing what we did with the rear two properties.
No, I know, that's CPA money, I know that.
Right, so, you know, that's really.
Now you can't do anything with, you can barely walk on it, to that point.
No, that's not true. I mean, I don't know where, you can walk on it.
Didn't we have a meeting last year when they said, we can't do anything but walk and can't ride a bike on it, can't have a horse on it, we can walk on it, barefoot?
Passive recreation.
It's open space, like many of our other open space properties in town.
That's the only, my, my, my only, my only point was, that I was worried about, is if you take the water, where the wells are going, I'm just worried that we're going to have a conversation later, and that we want to tie that rail trail into this front parcel, and we're going to say, no, can't do it.
No.
We couldn't put bikes on it last year, like Mike's saying, we couldn't. It couldn't have anything motorized, which, there's a lot of things we couldn't do at that point in time.
We did set aside an easement through that conservation restriction property that was on the former Mattingly property to get to the rail trail, to get from the rail trail over to the former busing property. That was taken into account, that's built into the conservation restriction, so we can do that.
Well, I don't, we can have this, get away from these poor people, but we can have that conversation later, but I, you know.
Right, so I think, keep in mind, almost the frustration with Center Street is the same frustration now with the rail trail. We're spending all this money to build this, to get this great trail, and now we've had to decrease it because of the turtles. So if we don't mitigate for them, we don't have a trail.
No, we realize that, I'm not getting.
But that's the situation that we're in, unfortunately.
I, I got you, I got you.
It's not anyone's ideal situation, but.
No, I think we all know that, but we're just pointing out.
And you know something, and, and, listen, I say it the way it is sometimes, we can spend, and, Mike, I'm not, we spend money in town meeting, town people voted, to turn around and dredge a pond, but yet we have a piece of land they've invested all kinds of money in, and the people don't even want to do anything with it, or committee doesn't want to come out and use that land. That's what's frustrating. That's what's frustrating when you sit here, you know what I mean? That's all I'm saying. I don't want to lock that piece of land up anymore, so that we can hopefully get people to realize and say, guys, let's do something, let's use CPA money for that front parcel, let's tie it into the rail trail. I mean, I'd rather be doing that kind of project than dredging out lily pads, just me personally. So, I'm sorry, we can move on.
No, I think, I think this is, this is a good discussion.
And I'm not trying to pick on any volunteers. You guys do great work, and Mike does great work. My point is, I'm an infrastructure guy. I'd rather see infrastructure. I'd rather see something you can walk in and put a, put a bunch of kids on a hatch shell and sing. That's just me.
Well, that's, I think, I think that's my hope and our hope, that this trail will provide that infrastructure.
Well, I hope so.
To do something with that property. That, that being said, fully understand and appreciate the concerns and the context behind all this, coming into this, and obviously, we'd rather we talk about something else.
Yeah.
That being said, to Denise's point, the project is kind of on that five-yard line. This mitigation and the national grid lease, which Elise can talk about very quickly, are the two real last things to move this forward, so, Mike.
How many years have you been working on this?
2012.
Six, six years?
Six years.
So, I joined the committee, and our first town meeting vote was in 2014, so late 2013, I think I joined.
So, at least five years.
And that may sound like a long time, I think, when you compare that timeline against other towns.
Yeah.
This is a hyper accelerated timeline, so we should be very proud of the town we moved at this.
No, and I think, like Bill said, I mean, we're all appreciative of your hard work, and we see the value of it, and the, the ability for the people to use the trails and go from town to town and have walking areas and stuff. I think it's great, it's just incredibly frustrating to sit in this position and know, you know, what we spend on things and what we want to use things for, and then we just can't, and it just shrinks and it goes away, and you're sitting up here, holding your hands, like, what are we doing?
Yeah. I will say that, I mean, that's one of the reasons we went down to an eight-foot trail.
Right.
And we really tried to minimize the footprint as much as we could, but, you know, you can't go less than eight, because then safety comes into play, but.
But the next question would be, when you're coming from Georgetown, or you're hooking up with Haverhill, are you going from Georgetown being 10, and then eight to Groveland, and then 10 back to Haverhill?
Well, Georgetown has turtles too, so we're probably going to be running into the same thing on them.
So, they got a two-foot trail, and they got a single file.
Right, they're all in.
But natural heritage evolved in that discussion as well, so, you're not alone in this.
Maybe we should just have a sky trail, that way everything's above it, right? Just go right above it.
Question and comment. I, I think the rail trail, in, in any community that has a rail trail, it, it's actually helped out the communities. Property becomes more valuable in close proximity to the rail trail. People, people want to move and live close to the rail trail. It's a, it's a safe, it's a safe place for people to travel, and I, I can, I can envision people from Ashcroft Terrace, the kids going to Bagnell School, taking their bicycle down the rail trail to get to, to the Bagnell School. So, I, I think it's a great idea, and I'm, I'm behind it. I, I think it, it's going to connect Groveland with Georgetown and Topsfield, Danvers area, and into the north, the west, to be Haverhill and probably beyond. Two questions that I have. At some point, maybe, and, Mike, maybe, maybe you don't know the answer to this, but at some point, we, we just reconstructed Route 97 up as far about, about Parker Road, and at some point, from there to Groveland Square will be done sometime in the future. When they do that, do you know if they have to do some kind of rail, bicycle lanes along that, that section of the, of the road? I know this first section was done prior to, prior to any legislation as far as that goes, but it, is it still in effect that all the new designs have to include a bike lane?
So, yeah, through that stretch where Center and School Street is, that we are proposing a very short bike lane stretch to get us from School Street over to, or from Center Street over to School Street.
He's speaking about the full reconstruction from.
The project they just did.
White Star Village, all the way down to Groveland Center.
Yeah, there's a, there's a section that, along School Street, that at some point in the future, from Parker Road to, down to probably Gardner Street will be, will be redone. Does that have to include a bike lane?
They will likely consider it, especially if it is a DOT project, because they are trying to maximize healthier transportation options and multiple transportation options for people.
So, at some point, we could do a short extension from Center Street to.
So, even without the bike lane, the idea of that 97 improvement, you've got these huge wide sidewalks that go all the way from Georgetown Town Line out in the future down to Groveland Center. It crosses the rail trail at Center and School Street.
Yep.
And we have now movement on this Complete Streets Initiative, and we're partly through the, the application process, we will be getting, hopefully, funds on an annual basis to do other sorts of sidewalk improvements. The idea is that this will serve as the backbone to other improvements over the town's planning over the next, you know, many years, to have a network of pedestrian transportation through the town. And one idea would be to connect sidewalk improvements, say, to Washington Park. Or does that connect down into the Center Street portion of the, of the rail trail? So, this is all part of the town planning that we should factor in longer term, but it all starts with this off-road piece, which would be that, the national grid.
And maybe, maybe Mike Dempsey would answer the question better, but looking at this map of the turtle habitat, why is it that it's cut off through wherever we see people's And, you know, particularly like east of Salem Street, you've got, where every place where there's a, where there's a dwelling or a business, the turtle habitat goes through the back of the property lines. It just seems a little odd that everywhere that there's a, a house or a business, even the highway to Palmer and Garage down there, is, doesn't go through there. It seems like, like this section over here where the, where the solar field is, there's a section at Main Street and, Main Street by the Water Department down there. That's not part of turtle habitat. Can you answer why, why that little section, just, just take that particular one, where the Water Department building is on the corner of Main Street near the rail, where the proposed rail trail is, why, why isn't that turtle habitat there? It's, it's pretty low out in the back of that, there's a, there's a brook that runs through there. Why is that particular parcel not included?
Ed, can I just confirm that this is the parcel you're talking about on the map? This one, this little parcel?
Oh, yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I imagine, Ed, that quite a bit of Groveland was turtle habitat at one time, and what natural heritage does is, these are actually estimated turtle habitat, so they don't really go on the ground and, you know, look for turtles. They check to see what kind of conditions there are. And I know that part of what they do is they exclude any places, any, most parcels, especially single-family homes or small parcels. A lot of the parcels that are marked as habitat in Groveland are open space parcels. So, you know, that's why even, not, not all of that Center Street property, the center part of the former Bussing property is not turtle habitat. So, that, that combined with the fact that they exclude, you know, residences that probably at one time, if the residences weren't there, they would have been turtle habitat, but they exclude that. Because I think what they do is, you know, they're looking for places where turtles could live today, and they wouldn't be living in somebody's backyard as much as they might be living on a big open space parcel.
And what happens, like this 61.32 acres, this, that we could utilize, we could put a building on, what, what's the possibility that down the road, they could say, hey, yeah, the turtles moved over there?
They don't change it that much. I, I mean, I don't think that.
Turtle crossing?
You know, natural heritage rarely changes it. I haven't seen them do it, so it, it's highly unlikely, let's say that.
Can you guarantee that they would never do that?
No, I can't, I can't guarantee that.
I just have a fear that as soon as the town says, yeah, we need to put a, a building up there for, for whatever, they're going to say, hey, sorry, we, a turtle may be in that area, so we, we want to protect that turtle. And like, I know, you've been before, the meeting before, and, and to me, turtles have been around for hundreds and hundreds of years without man's intervention, and sometimes when man intervenes, it screws up the ecosystem. And I just see man intervening. Turtles are going to live wherever you, wherever they want to live.
Well, probably, it would be a good idea to put a plan together for how you wanted to use the remaining 50-sow acres there, like Bill's is saying, probably. And I think that natural heritage is, Denise, you probably can say that this is so, I think natural heritage is looking for this eight acres as total mitigation for what we're going to do there.
Yes.
Which includes the firing range and the rail trail.
Yes, that is accurate.
They're not talking about taking any more.
Today, but, but.
No, I, I don't think they're talking about taking any more.
No, no, but I think what Ed's saying, and what we're all feeling is, and we're not trying to hold you on the spot, we should probably get off the subject, period, but what I'm saying to you is, if we say we want to go put a hatch shell out there, are they going to turn to us and say, well, guess what, we want you to give us three more acres? But, you know what I mean? We'll have that conversation down the road, but I think that's where everyone's heading. You know what I mean, saying, if you want to start developing the land, now they're going to say, okay, well, guess what, we need more turtle land.
I don't think so.
Turtles live under a hatch shell.
Yes, I'm going to get up for that.
I will just say, when Mike's walking over there, I mean, you know, Mike alluded earlier that we had a meeting, we met for probably eight hours in this room, talking about this exact subject. I mean, we really, we talked about it, we looked. So, they were comfortable with eight acres, including the firing range mitigation. I, I don't think, unless something else comes up, I don't think that they would come back for further mitigation. I think they were comfortable and happy with our eight acres, and that would sort of, again, because we've already have a CR on the other land, that is, the conservation and CPA land, but I do think they're comfortable that this is it. Again, if something dramatic changes, but I think, I think the eight acres should do it.
Just a question about the crossing of School Street. So, this has been going on for about five years, the project, right? And we just finished 97 last year, so right here, we're crossing School Street again, right? And how are we crossing there? I think we talked about it maybe two years ago, but what's the plan to cross there? There's a flashing yellow there.
Rapid flasher and a crosswalk.
So, that's going to be added to there?
Correct. We, we tried to get DOT to incorporate our design into their active project.
Yes.
And they chose to.
Too far into construction to add it.
So, there's going to be stoppage of traffic on 97?
No, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon is a pedestrian warning advice, device, so it is just, it has a rectangular light, and just when someone hits a push button, it does like a wig-wag pattern.
Yep.
Back and forth, just a flashing yellow. They're more visible than the previously used, you might see like flashing beacons places that are, you know, maybe just overhead or along the sidewalks, but the, the way the lighting is, it's a higher compliance rate because it's more visible, so people have time to realize there's somebody in the crosswalk and it flashes.
Right, no, I'm just more of traffic flow, because if you come down School Street at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the afternoon, it's backed up for a mile, right? So, that's going to add to more traffic if there's a lot of people using the rail trail and going back and forth.
It could be, but because it's a warning device, it's not telling people to stop.
Right.
So, it's up to, I guess, pedestrians to make sure the cars stop, and the cars, you know, should yield, but.
State law, but.
Yeah, the compliance rate is higher, but, yeah, there's still a percentage that does not.
It seems that the, and I've been out on the rail trails, it seems like the.
I'm good.
The compliance is, is pretty great.
It is.
And I, I know just what you're talking about with those flashing signs, actually, the one closest to us that I can think of is in Topsfield on Route 1.
Yes, yep.
And you can see that, a, a good distance away.
Right.
Did I, did I hear you say it was going to be pedestrian-activated?
Yes, yes.
Just a couple of the quick things, a list of other questions on this, and then we'll wrap this up.
Going to go back, do we finish the previous slide?
Have you had enough, Mike, I mean?
I know.
Good, okay. So, I, I will just say, as there, so, we don't need a decision tonight on the turtles, but we will be needing this board to vote in the near future so that we can continue this process. So, if you're all comfortable with what's been presented, you absolutely can vote eight acres of mitigation, if you want to think about it, we can put it on a future agenda. But again, we're kind of stopped in the process until the board has taken this vote. So, I just want to throw that out there, you're not required to vote tonight if you need to think about it.
So, as I look at it, that's the most, least impactful area that we could use. Selectmen would.
What happens to your timeline if we take it to the next meeting to have this back on the agenda?
So, the context is that we now sit in the funding tip, Transportation Improvement Plan for DOT for the year fiscal, fiscal year 2021. That tip shifts, as we were shifted out of 2019, in the 2021 project shift. So, it behooves us to get the mitigation and the lease agreement satisfied as quickly as possible, so that as other projects shift, we have the design.
You could get put in.
We can then be submitted into a, a more accelerated timeline.
Yeah.
So, it, it, so our detriment not to delay.
Right.
But to Denise's point, if.
No, I mean, from my point of view, and just, just my thinking, there's no other way around it, it's just, like I said, it's frustrating when we're trying to do things for the town, and we run into these roadblocks that we don't foresee, and we start chipping away at things, as Bill was alluding to. But I mean, from my perspective, this is the only way we can move forward, and the only way to continue your path of five years of working on this and the money we spent, so, I'm okay with voting tonight, but the rest of the board has to weigh in on it.
So, is your intention to make a motion on that?
No, I'm just saying, I'm okay with it, so.
So, I will say that I know that there was an issue with the firing range, and they had an issue with a, a mediating the land and what have you, and I think the firing range was a good thing, and I wanted it, so for me to sit here and be criticized and say, no, I don't want to give them the land, that would be stupid. So, I'm good, I'm good, I'd have to sit here and fight it if they're going to take more, but what am I going to do? I mean, I voiced my opinion, and that's it, so I'm good with it. I just, I hate to see that this thing's going to be locked up to the point where we can't use it, but that's another night, another discussion, so I'm good with what, what they talked about here.
Selectmen watching.
Yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to see us get onto the, right on track and get, and get on for that money. The sooner the better. I'll, I'll make the motion that we, we support this, and I think that's a great thing.
Seconded.
So, your motion, as I understand it, is to move, move forward with the eight-acre mitigation, the 99-year lease with National Grid, and is there anything else?
Yeah, I think they're going to just touch base on the National Grid piece, if you want to hear the rest of her, Elise's discussion.
I'll be brief.
Take as long as you want for us to understand it. It's more important that we understand it.
Might be a couple days.
Than you be brief.
So, if you want to just make the motion on the eight acres at this point, we can do that, and then you can discuss the lease and vote on that if you'd like, or you can hold off until she presents.
Well, he's made a motion, it's been a second on the floor, for the eight acres, right?
Yes.
Mitigation, is that, any further discussion on that?
No.
All those in favor? All those opposed? The I's have it, we'll move forward, National Grid.
Thank you. So, National Grid, the coordination remaining is to, basically to obtain the 99-year lease for use of the trail on their property. So, we submitted 100% design to Mast dot, and then we also made a separate submission to National Grid. Previously, one of the earlier submissions at 25%, we did wire measurements out there and had submitted elevations of all the wires, and then as part of this final submission, we have given them the detailed grading of what the grading would be at every utility pole, whether it's like, you know, up six inches, down six inches, so they're able to just evaluate their facilities and understand what, if any, the impacts would be. So, we have submitted all that to them, and now they will undergo an engineering review, and likely, they won't fully coordinate the lease until that engineering review is completed, but that is ultimately the next step. So, the town at that point is now responsible for getting this lease, and ultimately, in this, in this town, it will be the Board of Selectmen that would be signing off on that with National Grid. And in order for, again, the project to be advertised, the right-of-way certificate would need to be issued and to satisfy that federal highway would require the 99-year lease. So, again, before that, before the project can be advertised, we would need the 99-year lease in place for use of this property.
And I, so I will just say that KP Law, which is our town council, drafted the lease that Haverhill is using with National Grid for their right-of-way. So, we have taken the Haverhill lease, sent that to council with the maps indicating our specific parcels for them to start updating it. So, they are. So they are working on that lease. And when they're completed with that, they'll have a draft for this board to review and then ultimately vote on and sign.
No, no.
I think that's, yeah, so we kind of got ahead of ourselves. So now is the ask for the, for the mitigation, the lease will come soon. I think we're probably anticipating that to happen in 2019, again, as soon as we can. No, no need for a motion or a vote tonight on that piece. Just knowing you're supportive is, is what we're looking for tonight. Thank you.
Can, will you come back in 20, give us some documents to read on this ahead of time? Because in 2019, I'm not going to remember a whole lot about this.
Website and Facebook.
Yeah, but I mean, just a one page that said, hey, this is what we talked about, remember? And I mean, I have my notes and I can go back to it, but a one page that updated us on what we talked about and what, what the, you know, the National Grid 99 year lease means. That way next time we can, you know, kind of snap through this little bit faster.
Yeah, one of those Reader's Digest condensed version kind of thing.
Hypothetically, if this kind of keeps going the way it's going, one little shovel hit the ground.
So unless I'm mistaken, so we're in the fiscal year 2021 queue. We would advertise the fall of calendar year 2020 to be ready for 2021 calendar year spring construction. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it's right now tracking in the first or second quarter of that year. So yeah, so it would be ready to put a shovel in the ground 2020.
So that being said, we've spent a lot of money in this project and you guys have been hired and you guys are moving forward with all your work. What's the chance of them saying no at this point?
At this point, everyone is very invested. That's why we sat here with Mast dot, National Heritage, National Grid. And we got everybody in the room to talk about the turtles, how we were going to get over that hump.
Right.
And that's why we're here tonight is to then now it's in, you know, your hands to sign off.
It's moving, it's moving forward to the point where we could have a shovel in the ground in 2021?
Yeah, or before. If a project falls off the tip, this is only a couple million. And because it's such a small fee that, you know, that's a smaller project for the projects on the tip that this could slide in if it's ready to go, so.
Yeah, we appreciate very much the reaction.
Bill, I will just say the current administration, the governor is very supportive of these projects. He really wants these projects to move forward. So, so that's why they're actively funding them. And so I don't see any issue with Mast dot coming through.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was fun.
Okay, moving right along, we have the Water and Sewer Superintendent, Tom Cusick, to discuss water expansion, sewer expansion as it relates to the trail project.
More trail project?
I'll try to keep it brief. I have with me tonight Victor Olson from, also from Stan Tech. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about, obviously, the rail trail. It's obviously very important to the town and the fact that, and money invested into this. And that the town has a sewer master plan that dates back to the 60s. Currently, the Gravity Sewer ends right behind Whitestone Village. And if the town decided to extend Gravity Sewer over to Center Street, there's a couple of areas that we've identified that would have to cross the rail trail. So all I really wanted to do was kind of plant that seed and let everybody know about that. Obviously, we don't want to dig up a rail trail that was just constructed if we have to cross a sewer. Now, that being said, we don't have any commitment that we'll be extending sewer to those areas anytime soon. But it's, it could happen. And we may be able to do a couple of things to possibly mitigate that in the future, with maybe some preparation of securing some easements within those areas and possibly what I would consider a dead pipe. So it would be a pipe on either side, get us out of the scope of work. And then you would go back there later, you wouldn't have to disturb the rail trail and the town could extend sewer. There's obviously a cost associated with that. We're not that far ahead where we've, we've got some preliminary numbers, roughly a thousand bucks a foot.
How many feet are you talking?
Um, I'm talking, well, it's eight feet on either side, but we'd have to be beyond that, obviously.
About 50 feet across, across the right of way of Victor Olson, Stan Tech. And you probably want to go a little bit beyond that. So talking like 50 to $75,000 to get across to that one location. And they did this second location, just to double that.
Sorry.
The store itself is only about 350 feet away from where this cross would go. So if you actually wanted to connect that, then you're talking another 350 feet to that. And once it crossed, it would actually allow the parcel on the other side to be able to connect to, to a live store.
So, through the chairs, okay?
Yes, you're on the floor, go ahead.
So, Tom.
Yes.
So what kind of money hypothetically would it cost to go from where that's stubbed off right now to the other, to Center Street, to get through that property?
Oh, could be somewhere, I think the last time we looked at it was somewhere 300, $300,000 or something like that.
And now that gets, that gets you into the Center Street area and then ultimately gets storage into South Groveland.
Right, so this study we did two years ago, you can't really see it, but there's a couple of different options. And we went up to the residents in the area and asked them if they wanted sewer. And it was voted down, so.
But it was only, that was only one area though, wasn't it the Harvard Road, Yale Street area only?
It was Harvard, Yale, Pandora in that area. You know, it's important to understand that's, that the way that the town puts sewer in currently is 100% betterment. So all those costs are borne by people.
Right.
And that just, what that does is for a project of this size and where you have such a large cross-country section where it's really not servicing anyone, we're not picking up those extra betterments, if you will, that just elevates the end cost of the betterment to the point where it's just not digestible for most people. If that was offset by a bigger user, say like a Chesterton or something like that, and they decided, you know, this is something we really want, or it's maybe the industries in that area that's something that you want, something that might benefit land in 20 years that's on Center Street, that seems to be shrinking on you. You know, but it's something there that may add value to that if you want to, if you want to develop it in the future. So it's probably a larger discussion or something. I've talked to Denise a little bit on the financing end of it, something that we, you know, we're not going to really dig into tonight. But it's something that I think we should probably talk about.
If you take a home in South Groveland that is going to be sold and they have to do a septic over, you're talking probably 30, 25, 30 grand.
Close, and that's kind of where the betterments came in. And I think that's, and you have some people that obviously if they put in a new septic system in, they're not going to want that, right?
Right, got it.
So I guess it's, it's more of, I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention because the last thing I want is, you know, we sit down with, so the town sits down with somebody at some point, 10 years down the road, and we say, you know, geez, we really want to see sewer extended to this area. It's like, well, now we've got to cut into this rail trail that we just had to do all this, this work with. So that was my main goal tonight was just kind of to convey that to everyone and just let them understand that that's something we could have to be dealing with in the future.
Yes, like we would.
I've had some people ask me about bringing sewer to the Washington Street area. Would this help that as well, or is that a completely separate area in town that needs its own line?
Yeah, so I mean, really, it may be worth looking at the whole master plan, right? And deciding, do you want to put sewer in the rest of town? The area that you're talking about more than likely probably would break off and go down towards where Main Street was just done over.
Yes.
And head that way.
Yes.
We looked at that.
Mostly those neighborhoods before the Water Department building.
Yep.
And then off Madison or whatever that is over that neighborhood.
So that was a perfect, that's a perfect example because when we did the Main Street project, you know, we thought about sewer too. When we did a calculation what that cost was going to be, it was just so high because it's so deep that when you look at those, those big cuts and what it costs to put a sewer of that size in, if you don't encompass more of, of the residents, then you can't offset those costs. It just inflates it to the point where it's, it's not really viable unless maybe you look at the rest of where you want a sewer as a whole, the rest of the town, and come up with a master plan there or revisit the master plan and get an idea of what that cost would be collectively for the rest. Because the piecemeal stuff, unless it's already kind of in that area. So we looked at it at a couple of examples. The last one that went through was on Highland Ave. Well, sewers right there was very easy, the betterments were small. That was a quick and easy job and the people voted that in. The last one we did on Governor's Road, we reached out to residents, half of Governor's Road has sewer, the other half doesn't, they decided they didn't want it. So it becomes really, you know, it has to be voted in.
Right. The only reason I was mentioning that was because.
Do we, you all, you all set?
The only reason that I was mentioning that piece of land is if, if we do end up trying to develop it or whatever, do we put that in, that piece in with that project and fund it, whatever we do there? That's all, that's the only reason. Curiosity 300,000, you know, if you put a hatch shell or you do some recreation on there, then we maybe look at putting that pipeline through that property, I'm thinking.
Yeah, and I don't want any misconceptions that, you know, all we need are these, these easements within the rail trail. You know, there, there would be private bargains that we would have to also get easements. So although it's a, it's basically a pipe to nowhere, it's just in preparation, if in fact it were good, to go forward. So, you know, it would have to be a decision you'd have to make.
Right, okay.
Selectmen would.
Yeah, now there's, there's eight houses going in on Center Street.
That would, that would have saved.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Now, if they're, were they approached, the developer approached to, if you're going to be putting in septic systems at, at 30 grand, and, and you know, Bill had just mentioned 30, I think it'd probably be higher than that. Why didn't you make a deal? You're going to be spending a quarter of a million dollars. It would seem that you make some kind of a deal with him, like instead of putting in the septic tanks, help the town out and help run sewerage to those eight buildings. Now, did you speak to him about the possibility?
We did, they came in and they actually sitting on septic sand. So their, their septic systems are going to be probably fairly cheap because their, their conditions are such that it's not really going to, they're not going to need to bring anything in. And where it's a small project like that, as I said, if you're talking about 300,000 to 400,000 dollars just to get it to the edge of the road, you know, they're not going to want to kick in something like that on that kind of a sized project. Larger projects, maybe, maybe a bigger project where it's really something that they have to have sewer, like a Chesterton or, or a larger project like that.
Have they been approached?
Chesterton has, has voiced their opinion to us that they would, they would definitely like sewer in the future. But nobody's actually sat down and talked about that.
And I know they, they get that system pumped over there.
Oh, yeah, oh, it's in definite need.
If you, if you, if you were to take Chesterton, the eight, it's too late now, but the eight lot subdivision, and we did a master plan of what's going to grow in South Groveland, like there's a piece of land being developed on Salem Street and the town might be selling a piece. If we had a master plan and everyone got to it at a round table, we could say, okay, well now, guys, you know, it's all, it just makes sense.
Your new town planner might be, that might be a task, you might want to look at that and talk about that and financially what that means.
I know Georgetown might be looking to tie into the Haverhill sewer treatment plant. Apparently there's, they have, they're not up to full capacity over there. And have there been any talks about how Georgetown, if they're interested, is going to run a sewer line?
So their consultant reached out to me.
It seems like that railroad bed would be the way to be doing that.
With the railroad bed, and that's this section.
Where the rail trail is.
Where the rail trail. What happens is that becomes not as deep and therefore you don't pick up as much as far as the, the gravity sewers. So if you sway away from where essentially it was laid out back in the 60s, which was the master plan, and you look at some of these alternate plans, you won't pick up as much gravity, you have to put in pump stations. So some places you're going to have to put a pump station in no matter what.
But if they're, if they're, if they're looking, if they're looking to tie in, they're going to go through, through here. And that's, and certainly not going to bring them up Route 97 where it was just redone. That would seem like the, the most logical choice to do it. I mean, how serious are they tying into the Haverhill treatment plant?
Well, you know, they'd have to tie into us in our municipal agreement, which is in negotiation. You know, Haverhill would want to talk about that because essentially it's, you know, we're a conduit to them. So it would come through Groveland and we would have to pump it over. But there really wasn't any discussion outside of Groveland of how sewer gets to say Haverhill. You know, I know it's kind of in its infancy, I think. They were just kind of looking at the downtown area and what those possibilities are. But they haven't come in and talked with us publicly.
Okay.
Yes, like we would.
Who's going to pay for this?
That's the question, yeah. I mean, the cost, if we're looking at quite possibly $100,000, then we would have to consider how that's being paid. If it's something that's solely out of a free cash type situation, if it's something that the town wants to look at and, and fund it in different ways, that, you know.
You know what happens? Let me, let me recap for the town what happens with different ways. So we go to the town and we say, oh, we're going to do a debt exclusion. Like, all right, let's vote it, you know, it sounds like a good project, let's vote a debt exclusion in. And then the taxes come out in January and everyone's like, what happened to my taxes? Why did they go up $500? Well, you forgot you voted in this debt exclusion.
Well, within this meeting, I guess hopefully that's some notice out there to kind of what we're talking about and why that would be an effort to kind of, kind of go that way. As far as how the funding is, you know, I think, again, we'd have to probably have a, a sit down amongst, you know, maybe the Water and Sewer Board and this board and Denise and town planner and kind of talk of all that maybe as a whole and look at that and what the feasibility is. I know that there, there is some time before, this, this would obviously have to be constructed before the rail trail. So we've got a little bit of time there. But yeah, I mean, you know, there's, there's free cash within the sewer department. I guess I'm not at the liberty to say, yeah, this is how we're going to fund it. I just don't, I don't know that right now.
No, I'm not, I don't mean to put you on the spot that I want to know exactly.
No, I, I know it would come up.
Right, but you know, at some point it always comes down to money.
Everybody wants to know what's being paid.
It comes down to money.
Sure, absolutely.
And, you know, people forget that when they voted debt exclusion in that their taxes go up.
Sure.
So, you know, the tax rate has stayed pretty consistent for five or 10 years or so. It's the debt exclusions where your taxes go up, so.
That's it?
Yep.
So when we, real quick, when we go to town meeting, we have water, we have sewer. People are taxed on water, people are taxed on sewer, whatever.
I hate that word, taxed on water.
Whatever they, whatever you want to call it.
The usage charge, yes.
Usage charge, okay. So the money for the usage on the sewer.
Correct.
What does that money go to? Real quick, I, I know this isn't what we talked about.
Capital projects, so it would be something similar to that.
So what capital projects have we done?
Well, we did the Main Street project. I think we paid some of that with the engineering, might have got that going with reserve funds. So the, the big pump station down at the Estes Lumber, that was a total rehab about four years ago.
Right, so every year, do we do a capital project with the sewer money?
No, no.
So what kind of money hypothetically we talking about, we have?
Oh, you got me on the spot, I'm not quite sure.
Not, not, not holding you to number, but are we talking $100, a million dollars?
I want to say it's somewhere around 200,000.
Oh, so it's not like millions, but.
Oh, God, no.
Okay.
No. I mean, we try to hold somewhere between 20% as, as, you know, as a rule of thumb.
Okay, all right.
Of the operating budget.
Yep.
Do you have any further questions?
I'm good.
Tom, thank you very much for coming in and letting us know about this potential expansion down the road. We have till 2020, I imagine, to really come to a concrete thing before they stop breaking ground in the rail trail.
Sure.
So appreciate your advance warning.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Alrighty, next up we have.
You going to make it though? You going to make it?
I'm going to try.
That's why there's a buffer.
Next up, we have the Board of Health to discuss the public nurse position. Okay.
Okay.
First of all, thank you for coming in. I, I believe you owe this board an apology for the rude way you tried to interrupt this meeting the last time. So we'll start with that, I think that's due.
I am not proud of the way I acted. I have my regrets. I do believe it was mutual. I, I apologize, I didn't mean to offend anybody, but it was kind of spur of the moment. We had been here a long time waiting and weren't even given the acknowledgement, so.
Well, you weren't on the agenda, that's why. And this meeting, these meetings have a process, and the process should be respected at all times, even if you don't agree with it.
Okay, well, that's why I'm back.
And that's why you're on the agenda today.
Okay, thank you.
Elaine, can you state your name?
Elaine Wasney, Chair of the Board of Health. I'm not sure which one's live here. There's three of them I'm looking at. It should take maybe two minutes of your time, hopefully, disclosure statement for the public health nurse. We wanna just finalize, get everything done, wrapped up, and put this puppy to bed. This disclosure statement requires approval by City Council, Board of Aldermen, Board of Selectmen, or Town Council. So I'm just here to present this to the board and hope that you guys can sign it, and then we can just file it with the town clerk and be over and done with this.
What do we be asking, what are we being asked to sign?
The disclosures by municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract as required by General Law, Chapter two six eight A, Section twenty B. This is from the Ethics Commission. This is what our nurse was asked to fill out. This is the form she was directed to fill out and then to record with the town clerk.
Now, how do you plan on getting through the numerous conflicts of interest that were noted from the State Ethics Board, of which there are many?
You read differently than I did. What I was read is this is the form. I was told this is the form to send her to, and this form has to be filled out, and this takes care of it. I don't have in front of me, I don't know, what specifically are you talking about?
I'm specifically talking about.
I think she was on seven different committees that had conflict of interest regarding funds and influence over.
Yeah, it had nothing to do with the Health Department.
Unfortunately, it has something to do with her. Your inquiry raises questions under Section seventeen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-three. So it raises questions under four different statutes. And in all these, it is stated that they are not exempt positions, and they are not subject to special municipal employee status. There's a real, there's a real issue here that has to be overcome. And I don't see how we overcome that. We're just assigning it a document.
Okay, then I would actually respectfully request that if there is still an outstanding issue, that this go-to Town Council at this point in time, because as far as we're concerned, Ethics Commission is done with it. This form is what has to be filled out and filed, and then we should be done with it.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So Elaine, have you read the ethics report?
I've read the one that came in a month ago, maybe?
No, this is the one that would've come September fourteenth.
I'd have to see it to know if that's, I'm assuming I've seen it. I know I've seen, I've seen many things that have come in.
So just, you know, and I did speak with Claire about this. You know, under the Section twenty exemption, there's nine different steps that have to be taken, and one of which is the Board of Health has to make a written certification as to part of it. The Board of Selectmen need to approve each of her individual positions with her public nursing position. In addition to disclosures, she, there's things that she cannot participate in any longer. I believe the CPA committee was one of them identified in here.
Historical is also another one.
Historical, I think she can participate in, she just can't come before this board. But I believe it says she can no longer participate on the CPA committee. There's several things that still need to be done in addition to a written disclosure, if you read the actual full report.
The Selectmen portion is in here, and our portion is in here. We've already signed our portion stating that nobody on the board can do as part of their regular duties, her proposed duties. And the other, why I know the other part is in here too, for the Selectmen that I had just read to you.
What does it say? Can I see it, please?
I mean, if this is gonna go in circles forever, I would respectfully request Town Council, get this wrapped up. I mean, this is, this is getting ridiculous. This is past the point of ridiculous.
This is nothing that I believe Town Council can, State Ethics Board is already weighed in on this. They override everything.
They override the Town Council.
But they can, Town Council can interpret.
There's.
I don't think there's anything to interpret.
There's not a lot.
Can I just ask a question real quick, Bill? Can someone show her this document and make sure she saw this document? It doesn't sound like she saw this document to me. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but.
Bless you. I'm assuming you have the document that was addressed to Claire, that's five pages of their decision.
I believe I did see that. I don't have it in front of me. I wasn't expecting to need it tonight. I haven't looked at it in weeks.
So that being said, if the Ethics Board has told you people that you have to comply with one through twenty, once you've complied with one through twenty, she should be good to go. And if they're saying she can't be on a certain committee, or she can't serve on this or that, she just needs to refrain from that.
I don't know if they specifically stay there. They're usually pretty broad in their statements, and they won't say anything specific to anybody but her.
So then you read it?
Pardon?
Then you read it?
I said, yeah, I believe I did, yes, but not lately. It's not fresh in my mind.
There's some very specifics in there.
And that form does address some of them, and I believed, I thought it addressed all of them. And I do believe a lot of them aren't even related to her position as a public health nurse.
Well, I know that.
They're related to the conflicts of interest that her position as a public health nurse would encounter. That's the reason that we're here. That's the reason for the conflict of interests. So if she wasn't going to be the public health nurse, you're right, there are no conflicts of interest. But because you've chosen her for this position, there are a number of conflicts of interest stated in a number of different statutes for to be specific.
Okay. Well, can we request that the Selectmen sign that form and at least have that part of it taken care of?
I'd also like to discuss the whole process, interview process, because we don't see a lot of notes here. I know we've asked for Freedom of Information Act, we've asked for a lot of documents, but we don't seem to have too many. As I understand it, the recordings of your meetings are taped over each and every meeting. None are preserved.
They're taped over as soon as the minutes are approved.
But none of those are preserved?
Correct.
Is there a reason for that? Is tapes that.
Efficiency. It's not required by law.
In normal circumstances, I would say you're right, but the minutes, some of these minutes that I read are so inadequate that I don't know how any person could pick these up, read them.
I believe by law, the only thing that has to be put in minutes is actual votes. People that are present, that's pretty specific what's required in minutes, and I believe we meet them all.
Well, my understanding is any person should be able to pick this up and read through it and know pretty much everything that went on in the meeting. For example, I don't see any notes here on any interviews done with any other candidates.
There were two candidates interviewed.
And how would I see that? What meeting should I go to to see those notes discussed?
Probably would be August ninth, I believe.
And discussions that was interviews, would I find in what page?
No, there are no discussions of the interviews.
There are no discussions?
No votes were taken, no motions made, except to vote to hire the nurse.
Do you think in the interest of transparency, that was the best course of action?
It's legal, it wasn't considered best or worst, but some people during interviews want some privacy. There are people who don't really want their information out there until they've got the job or pretty close to getting a job.
This is a public position. How could they want to be anonymous if they're applying for a public position?
It was an open meeting. If anybody was interested in coming by and sitting in, they were welcome to. There were no closed doors.
It seems to me that this was almost a slam dunk.
So you guys just not happy with our choice for the public health nurses is what this all comes down to?
That's not what I said. I don't believe I've even indicated that in my, in my statements.
Okay.
I just find that if this board had conducted business in that way, there would be many, 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 many questions of us, of the transparency of the entire situation. Yes, Selectmen Wood saved my voice.
In reading through some of the documents, you've had a couple of people express interest in that position, in which some of the responses were, she's hired, or she's excellent. Can you expand, because we have no idea, as to why those people were not actually considered for the position? Because we have no idea, again, to allude to Bill's position. We have no notes to go by, we have no meetings to review.
Claire's experience, knowledge of the town was considered the most valuable. Two member two people, two applicants were unable to attend interviews, so it came down to her and one other applicant.
Were these applicants afforded other opportunities to come in at a different time? I mean, there is such a thing as life that goes on, and sometimes we're not available during those times, and we have to reschedule.
The board opted to try to get somebody on board to get the ball rolling, and somebody who would kinda be able to get right in there and get her feet wet and.
So the answer to my specific question is no?
Correct.
And do you think that was the best process?
Best or worst, it's a choice that was made.
Bill?
Yes, continue, Mr. Wood. I'm sorry I interrupted.
No, 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 I was trying to think. So I see, like I said, a bunch of resumes and information from other candidates, but I don't see, I don't see Claire's resume. Oh, here it is, okay. All right, I'm gonna read through this, Bill.
Selectmen Wood, you have the floor.
It's under your understanding that there's no ethics violation? And that your understanding is the paper that you read, that this candidate doesn't have to recuse herself from any of these boards or committees or whatever?
I will.
And that's why, that's why you're asking us to sign this piece of paper tonight? Because it's under your understanding that the Ethics Board came out with a criteria that you guys need to meet that guideline, and I don't care about, I don't care about what they're talking about over here. I sat here the night you came in a few weeks ago, and I said to you, listen, your board is the hiring, firing of this particular person. You gotta, you gotta do the due process of the interviews and all that. That's your job. That's not our job at this point, okay? I think what they're on to is they don't feel like the process was done fairly, but I'm gonna let that sit aside for one second. Okay? So benefit of the doubt, that's your job. I said that night to you, it's your job. My point is, they were looking for an ethics decision. We got the decision. I have read the decision. I understood this decision myself. There is certain criteria your candidate needs to meet, and that she needs to get off a few different boards, or get off of some committees or whatever. That's how I read it? Maybe I read it wrong, and I'm not willing to sign anything, and I know your candidate, and I know what she's done, and I know her nursing background, et cetera, et cetera. No doubt in my mind that I'm good. But my point is, you don't wanna have her come out and do this position and then ignore these things that she needs to do. You're putting her in the hot seat, she's gonna get in trouble. So until, I think you should get that piece of paper, don't push this tonight, go back, read it, pull it apart. At least one more meeting, because I read it that way. I read that something needs to be done here. That's just me. I mean, I'm not talking for these other guys.
But will we have a Selectmen's cooperation when it comes time to do that?
Let me tell you something. I've always been cooperative here. I always try to find, you know, common ground here. I think everyone here does. These guys are here to protect the town on a process that wasn't due just in their mind. I got it. And I think they have the right to say what they're saying. You said to them, listen, I moved this process along because I'm protecting the town for no town nurse. I get that. We still have a situation, and we have not met the requirement out of our hands. Town Council is not gonna come in and say, listen, you know something, we're gonna get involved in this. They're gonna say, listen, the decision's on a piece of paper, go answer it. Don't waste the Town Council's money or time. Fix it. That's all they're gonna say. They're gonna say, fix it. That's what needs to be done.
Okay.
And I'm not trying to be a wise guy, I'm just trying to be open and honest to you. Until that piece of paper is then addressed and taken care of, you can go to Town Council. They're gonna come back and they're gonna tell you, listen, address it.
Okay, sure. And she'll go back to the Ethics Commission again?
I don't think you need to go back to the Ethics. I think you need to read the piece of paper.
I think the decision's already been made.
The decision has been made on that piece of paper. You gotta read it and comply in what they've said.
Okay.
And I know the candidate, and I know some of the things that this candidate has worked duly and loved certain things she's done for this town. She may not even wanna get off that stuff, you know what I mean? I don't know. Maybe, I don't know, but there's a communication breakdown somewhere. I don't know where it is, but there's a communication breakdown here somewhere. I can't figure it out, but I read it, I understood it.
Are you?
I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. You had the floor.
No, I took too long.
No, you never take too long.
All right. Thank you for coming in.
In the interest of information dissemination, I don't think there's any conversation that can be too long in order for people to understand everything. I'm in the business of total transparency. If it isn't totally transparent, then we've got something to hide. I don't have anything to hide, so I want total transparency. I want the light of day to shine on everything we do, so that there are no questions, there are no problems, there are no conflicts later on. That's the way I roll. I don't know about anybody else, I'm only gonna speak for myself. Selectmen Watson, do you have anything to add?
Yes. It looks like there was, one, two, three, four people that applied for the job.
Correct.
But, and I don't see, I don't see it any different than the process that we go through here on the Board of Selectmen, that everybody that applies for a job, we don't interview. And in most cases, you might limit it to, you look over the applications without giving them an interview. You might disregard one or two of them because they don't meet the qualifications, the time, et cetera. So they interviewed people, they chose the person that they felt was the best one, and they were doing it under the cover of the law that gives the Board of Health the power to hire people that work in their office. We ran into that a year ago. But as far as the ethics, as soon as they get that all up to date, I think we just move forward. And it's certainly very well qualified, and I did find it interesting that she was the only one that, the person that was chosen, was the only one that gave her paperwork, her certificate on Board of Health registration. It was kind of interesting. It seemed like, it seemed like any, any position that you apply for, you give all your credentials, and she, it seems to me she had the most complete application of anybody.
Yes, just one second, because I have four applications in front of me. Is that true? Four people applied? And how many were actually interviewed?
Two.
Two. And the other two were unable to attend that specific, so there was no other attempt to make an alternative time? So I respectfully disagree with Selectmen Watson that if these candidates were simply disregarded for their lack of experience or qualifications or education, I could understand his point of view. But they were simply disregarded because they were not afforded an opportunity to be interviewed.
One we never heard back from, and the other one, the board, had their reason. Nothing major or nothing personal against her, but they opted for a little bit of different. They thought the distance might be too far.
I think we know the reason. Selectmen Wood, yes?
I think Selectmen Watson is wrong, because I'm looking at one of the letters, and it says RN, BSN, PCCN, which are the qualifications for the role. Now, if I'm applying to a job, and I put. Now, um, if I'm applying to a job, and I put down a BS or an MPA, I'm not gonna send in my degrees as a copy of it. The fact that I put an MPA or a BS is sufficient enough that I have it. And if you ask for clarification or actual proof of that, that's when you move forward, correct?
Either way, but often nurses, I mean, they're car, it's a license size card, it's no big deal to give a photocopy of it with your application.
Right, but I'm, like, when I'm applying for something, and they're asking for my college experience, and I put down my three degrees, I'm not sending copies of it with it. I'm just saying, I have a, a minor in this, a BS in this, and an MS in this.
Yeah.
I don't supply copies unless they ask for some, which I think is normal.
And to add to that, I think, I've got certifications, CCRN, ACLS, PALS, BLS, CRRT, IAPB, IV therapy, TNCC. I don't know how you could miss those. They'd stick out like a sore thumb. So, some of the candidates have, uh, in fact, stated all their qualifications, degrees, and certifications, as did the chosen candidate. Just seems like all was in order, maybe just overlooked.
So I'll make a motion, we table this until next meeting?
Uh, if, I would agree to that, Selectman Dunn. If the conflicts of interest were resolved by the next meeting, but I think we should postpone this, table this until all conflicts are resolved, and then come back to us, because we're just gonna be, uh, back in the same situation. To table it for, for, till the next meeting, if these conflicts are resolved, we're still same with, faced with the same situation we are today. So until those conflicts are resolved, I, I, I don't see how we can move forward on any of this.
So the conflicts are the ethics?
Seventeen, nineteen, I forget, there were four of them, twenty and twenty-three.
So I'll make an amendment to my motion, that we table it until the, until the...
Conflicts are resolved?
Conflicts are resolved seventeen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-three. Once those are resolved, then come back before us, and if they're resolved by next meeting, then...
Could we read out those, could we read out those conflicts, so that we're familiar with them?
Seventeen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-three. I, I, I think the State Ethics Board needs to be comfortable.
Could we read out, could we read out what those conflicts are?
They were sent over in a...
They were sent over in an email, uh, and a number of times. I don't think we're gonna take the time to read through all these four sections at this meeting. I encourage you to read through them on your own, at your own leisure. But there were five pages here that, um, were, were quite specific and quite substantial. That I don't see how this body moves forward, um, and just looks the other way on all these stated conflicts.
But my point I'm trying to make here is, if, if those are answered by the next meeting, you have the, you have the right to set the agenda.
If those conflicts can be satisfied by the next meeting, I would have no problem putting them on the agenda.
That's your right, I'm just asking to table it.
It's two weeks to settle a lot of conflicts, I'm not sure it can be done in that time, but if it can, absolutely. The agenda is set by Wednesday of the meeting, of the, the Wednesday before the meeting. Uh, so that would be...
Seven business days, eight business days.
Eight business days.
The tenth.
The tenth, because by law, the meeting has to be posted by Thursday. I tried to meet with Denise by Wednesday, if not earlier than that, to discuss potential agenda items, so that we can make sure that we have, um, everything that we've thought of, so...
Okay, are we done?
So there's a motion, there's no, hasn't been a second. Bill had a motion to table until the conflicts are resolved.
I, I, I'll second that, I don't think how, I don't see how we can move forward without it. So the motion is second, is there any further discussion on that mo, motion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Good, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, we have the discussion of the Groveland Day Committee. So, as I understand it, we've had a number of people. I'm hoping you have one more.
Yes, so I believe there are eight candidates.
I'm gonna come...
Don't say it, don't say it.
So eight people have provided a letter of interest to participate in Groveland Day. At our last meeting, um, the board did not decide yet how many people you wanted on the committee. You were waiting to see what kind of interest there was. So, um, you should have an odd number, so you could solicit one more to get nine. Um, if you want to meet these people, we can put them on the next agenda. It really depends on how you'd like to proceed.
We had what I'll call is a marital discussion. Because of all these people, I didn't see a specific person's name who was basically ringleader with this whole thing. Uh, so, I would encourage that person to please get something over to Denise ASAP. Um, your idea, it really should be one of the first ones. So...
So that one person will make nine?
That one person will make nine. We'll have another one of some marital discussions tonight when I get home, if I feel it's better. Bless you over there.
Bless you.
Hopefully it wasn't for me.
So would you like to meet the candidates? Or are you happy with the nine or the eight so far that have submitted an interest, and you'd like to just move forward with an appointment? You put together a charge for this committee at the last meeting, so it's really...
I think it'd be nice for the board to, to meet them, even though they may know them individually, I know a number personally, um, but I, I don't know if I can speak for the whole board that they wouldn't know them all, so I think it would be a, a nice gesture to bring them in. At least we can put a name to the face, or a face to the name. And just so the board becomes comfortable with, with the actions they've chosen. Yes.
And I would like to volunteer to be the liaison to that committee.
I would, I, I think that's a fantastic idea, Selectman Wood, and I, I think you just have the perfect temperament.
Oh, I don't know about that, I'll do it.
So I, I think that's a fantastic suggestion, unless anybody else has any, any other comments. I think that, uh, Mr. Wood, Selectman Wood, would make a fantastic liaison to that committee.
So I should schedule them for the next meeting?
Please.
Uh, I'd like to see, uh, more versatility in, uh, people on the committee. Uh, maybe, i- if you, if you involve different town groups. And two of these just, just jumped right out at me here. Um, this one particular one, this, this Kelly Jackson, uh, she had some great ideas, did, did, did some research in the town of Groveland, uh, which was pretty impressive. Uh, uh, another person, uh, involved with the, involved with the Boy Scouts, volunteered with the Boy Scouts, or Bagnell School, Kentucky color guide. These are the groups that you want to try to get to, uh, be involved in the, in the Groveland Day. Uh, oh, in, in addition to them, you know, I'd like to see somebody, uh, somebody from other groups. I don't know why we have a recreation groups, but, uh, I didn't, reading this, I didn't see much, I didn't see anybody here involved with, with the Little League. Uh, I didn't see anybody here involved with the Fire Department. Uh, that would be nice to get, to get them involved, both groups. Uh, so, maybe we can, uh, reach out to them to, uh, have somebody, uh, apply to get on, or, or make their, uh, make their name known. Uh, the more groups you get involved, the more town groups you get involved, the better you're gonna have a, uh, celebration. I don't have anything else.
I would concur with that statement, however, we've asked for volunteers, we can't, we can't mandate volunteerism. Um, these are the people that are willing to roll up their sleeves. Uh, I don't want to see anybody forced to the table, because they're not gonna be willing to roll up their sleeves and do some of the dirty work. Uh, as far as their background, I personally think it's irrelevant. What their background is, it's more interested me that they have the gumption and the, um, willingness to take on this kind of project. Um, I am sure, as I said, I know a number of these people personally, and they are involved with a number of different organizations in the town, and I have to believe they'd reach out to them. Some of them are involved in these groups. So, I'm not sure where you're headed, Selectman Watson, but I don't think that can be accomplished by mere volunteerism and asking. Again, we've given, what was it, two weeks? You know, everybody's known about it, we've reached out to everybody we can through this medium. Um, if they didn't volunteer, police, fire, Boy Scouts, Little League, Cub Scout, all. I'm not sure we have any control over that. Uh, I would imagine that this committee, once formed, will reach out to those specific groups to try and get not only their engagement, but their participation in a Groveland Day facility, um, because this should be a celebration of Groveland in general, and that includes all the groups within that, within our town.
Well, when you, when you involve the kids, and you get them to show up, the adults follow. And look at, um, look at out of town, when you have a, when you have some sort of a parade, for whatever the, whatever the occasion. If you get the kids to show up and they're marching, whether it be in a band, or marching with the Girl Scouts or the Boy Scouts, the parents show up. Uh, if you reach out to them, uh...
Well, we have reached out to them, and none of them's come back. So what, what would your suggestion be?
Reach out again, as, just, uh, say, "Look, we would, would like the participation from, uh, maybe from the Fire Department, maybe from Recreation. They, they should be involved." Uh, it all, uh...
They should be, but they wanna take an active part, they wanna take an ancillary part. I have no problem with that either.
Well, if you don't want to reach out to them, that's okay.
How long do we reach out before we just say, "We've gotta move on"?
Well, you're looking to interview these people at, at the next meeting. Uh, have them come in and introduce themselves or whatever. I don't see any reason why you can't, uh, send a note out to the Fire Department, a note out to the Recreation Committee, that, uh, what's going on, and maybe you could get some participation, but, uh, I, I see you don't want to do it, so, uh, you don't want to involve more people, so...
I can ask the Fire and Police, that's part of my thing.
Sure, I think they've been invited already, but if...
I think they have to.
We've got another two weeks, we can, uh, we can ask everybody in town. Um, but I could remind you that I think the last Groveland Days we had were basically run by a couple of people.
Yeah, the Merrills did most of it.
Much involvement from anyone else, although they had quite a good fair representation of everyone in town. So I think this can be done without it, but we will, we have two more weeks, we'll reach out.
Well, one of the things that we, you got to come, I think it's this coming Saturday, you have the, uh, the Pine Speedway reunion. They, uh, I don't know who handles that, uh, but that always goes over pretty good. I think last year, they had the biggest crowd they ever did. You know, whoever's handling that, it, it shows that, that they can get people there, they know how to do things. So, uh, I don't know what group it is that, that does the Pine Speedway, but if we could get somebody that's involved in that, get them on the Groveland Day Committee.
If they so wish.
That would be Claire Walsh.
Conflict.
A chuckle from the audience.
It's her in her entirety, she's the one who plans the Speedway reunion.
She, she, she does it herself, she does it herself.
Okay.
I gotta start writing a TV show or something, this is great.
You can't make this stuff up.
Well, she does a great job with it. Hopefully it didn't jinx this year's, probably rained.
No, it's supposed to be a nice weekend, still have good weather.
Good, 'cause baseball's nine o'clock. Okay, um, we'll bring those folks in next week, and we'll reach out, we'll try to reach out, per Selectman Watson's request, to other groups, to see if they have any desires to be involved in this, and if not, not. And if so, we'll see where it goes.
So I, my only thing on that is, and I don't disagree with reaching out, um, but I just want to caution that you have eight people that are very willing to step up, that are not actively participating. I just want you to be cautious that if you're having, you're requesting other people, and you're gonna select them over the people that have volunteered their time to, to participate, you might then lose interest in people wanting to be on boards and committees. So, that's all I will say, is, you know, you have eight people unsolicited that have come forward that want to participate.
I don't think it's in replacement of them, I think it's in to help them.
Well, if you're gonna add in addition to, I mean, but then, just keep in mind, then you're getting to be a much larger group of...
Right, but I mean, I think you can have the nine people on the board, and then have other people volunteer to help those people.
Absolutely.
Oh, I think absolutely, and I think regardless. I think regardless, you have people from police and fire, and Little League, and Softswall. I think they're all gonna want to participate.
Cub Scouts, and Girl Scouts, and absolutely, it, uh...
Hopefully whatever committee goes together, they're gonna go out and do the work, and they're gonna make those calls, they're gonna ask those people, on and on and on.
Right.
I can't imagine they would, as a matter of fact, I've already been requested to, that, uh, Ms. Selectman Dunn speak with that group about, they'd like to, they loved your parade. I, I, I told them, I think it's a little bit much to chew off in the first year, but God bless them, if they can pull it off, and with your experience, if they can do it, my, my, my feeling is go for it. But I would caution them against trying to bite off more than they can chew in this first year.
Well, if you have people that want to build something, they want to move something, it will get done, trust me. If you have the right committee, and they want to get it done, you can get it done.
These are very passionate souls, I see, believe me. They're, they've been in my shirt for quite a while. So we'll move on from that, and future of the Elm Square Committee.
So was there a future?
I would say...
I would say no.
I would say, I'd have to agree with...
Next topic. So we, so we, we're gonna buy, we're gonna buy a building in...
The building has been sold.
I got it, I know that.
And the property has been sold.
I got it.
So, uh, we don't have our liaison here for the Elm Square Committee, so in lieu of that, we have our next best candidate to speak on behalf of the Elm Square Committee, and that would be Mr. Michael Dempsey. So could you share with us what exactly is the fate of this committee?
Uh, so, uh, I am a member of that committee, and, um, yes, what you're saying is true, that building has been sold. So I, I would ask that, um, you give, until the end of the year, to dissolve the committee. Between now and then, I think the committee would like to meet at least one more time to just kind of go over a couple of, uh, potential other issues or other ideas that we were discussing, so, if that's okay with the board, that'd be great.
Well, this, this, this committee was given a specific charge, right? And that was to...
Yes, so I just...
Look into the, um, possibilities of purchasing that positive land for development.
Right, so I just pulled it up. The seven-member committee will be charged with the following: researching the prior action on the parcel with regards to the bridge project, land-taking, parking deals, and curb cuts; discuss the future of the Groveland Post Office; research funding options if the town were to buy the property, specifically the former gas station; meet with the appropriate state officials to discuss other opportunities for the land; propose potential uses of the property, and provide a report to the Board of Selectmen. That's what the charge was for this committee.
So it seems to me, under that specific charge, now that the property has been sold to a third party, there isn't, it, there really isn't anything to discuss with your committee?
Well, we owe you a report, right?
Well, you, I'm not sure what you'd report. The building has been sold to someone else other than us?
If you don't want to report...
I could write it right now for you, Mike, "Building sold," there you go, hold on.
If there's, if there's another project they want to do down there, just get the committee together and tell them to come back in and...
And get a specific charge.
You know what I mean, keep them together, don't let them fall apart, you know what I'm saying?
But it just seems to me that the charge you originally given is now rendered null and void, and the point moot, because we no longer have, uh, the ability to purchase that property.
We don't know, the property might go, be resold next week. Who knows?
Well, if it's resold next week, then we'll re-form your committee with that specific charge again.
Well, right, all I'm just asking is that you, I, I don't understand why... All I'm just asking is that you, I, I don't understand why you can't let the committee have one more meeting. If you're going to dissolve the committee, you can say dissolve it as of December 31st or whatever you want, but...
Let me ask you this, let me ask you a quick question. When's the last time you had a meeting?
We had a meeting in the spring. We've had several discussions since then, but not, not with the commit, official committee meeting.
I was going to say...
So, there's a lot of loose ends to tie up from what we were talking about.
So, the last agenda was May 15th?
Yeah, May.
Yeah, I was going to say, because that would fly into, in the face of what Selectman Carpenter has been telling us, as an active member of the Board, of that committee, that there haven't been any. She's had nothing to report on for a number of months, because there have been no meetings.
No, there were no meetings, but there were things being done by members of the committee. There were activities going on, communications with the own, you know, the former owner of the property, other people that were being requested, research that was being done.
So, the charge, the charge has been served. The charge has been served, and, and we know the outcome. It's sold, so if they want to...
Give us a final report? I, I, I guess I, I have no idea. Knock yourself out, I guess. I would have no objections unless anyone else has any objections to a final report from your committee.
And like I say, vote to end it, so then we have a deadline. Vote to end it, December 31st, and we'll give you a report and we'll be done. You won't have to take any more votes.
Well, how long will it take your committee to get its final report together?
Well, I would like till the end of the year, if you can grant us that, because I...
And what's going to happen, and I'm not being disrespectful to you, Mike?
Yes.
I know exactly what's going to happen. I read between the lines. The guy bought the building, he bought the building for three hundred and some odd thousand dollars. He tries to lease the building, the building doesn't lease. He goes back to the committee, or the committee goes back to him and says, "Hey, listen, nothing's happening to the building. Let's give you four forty for that building." That's what's going to happen. I know exactly what's going to happen. Sorry. You know, I say it the way it is.
There was somebody working in there the other day.
I know, they're trying to rent it. I mean, it's got rent signs up, but if the guy doesn't, if he can't sell it, and he can't, I mean, he can't rent it, what's he going to do? He's going to sell it.
We're getting, we're getting taxes, we're getting taxes on it, and that's an important thing.
Right.
Mr. Dempsey, how many meetings have you had, has the committee had?
Sorry. I don't care.
I'll check, give me a second.
Well, if the last one was five months ago, nothing's been done, so...
Bottom line, because we were going to buy that thing. We were, we had numbers talking, buying it for five fifty. It was sold for a lot less than that.
Fifty-five hundred?
So, I don't know. Huh? Fifty-five hundred?
Six.
Six.
It was sold for a lot less than that.
They've had six meetings since their inception.
We were going to buy some for...
Which was August of...
For a lot of money.
I believe it was September. I think it's just a year, September of last year they were formed.
So, basically, every other month you meet. You really need three more months to, to come up with a final report, or is it more, as Chairman Dunn alludes to, that kind of a hopeful wish?
My personal opinion only. Sorry, Mike. It's my personal opinion. You didn't say nothing. My personal opinion.
I like to refer to it, "next chairman".
I mean, just a question, do you, do you believe you need three more months to, to issue a final report on six meetings? If so, if, if that's what you really believe, and that's what you honestly feel is necessary, then I don't have a problem, but it seems, you haven't had a meeting since May, June, July, August, September. I don't know.
The report would tell you why.
Tell us why what? Why you have it at a meeting?
Why we didn't meet since May.
I just wrote it. Sold.
Does anybody have any feelings one way or the other?
If he wants to keep it open, I don't care.
My feeling is we make, I make a motion that we extend this for, we're in what now, October?
Yeah, October 1st.
November 1st. And we get a report back by November 1st, and that's it. We dissolve it November 1st. Because what happens, we start going into CPA projects and everything else, and the end of the year, they can come back before us with another CPA project, or whatever they think, but, you know something?
I'll second that in, in the interest of time.
Is, is your intention to make a motion?
Yeah, I just did. I just made a motion November 1st.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you. We'll look forward to your, um, committee report on, let me see, what's the first meeting into November?
It would be the sixth.
It would be the sixth?
Yeah, sorry.
No, because we're meeting the 29th. We have three meetings in October.
One, two...
The 12th.
Twelve.
Which is a Veterans Day holiday, I believe, so I think it's the 13th.
13th. It'll be Tuesday the 13th.
And if they can't, if they can't get it done by then, just let us know that they need more time.
Yes, the 13th is our first November meeting.
So, we'll put them on the agenda for that, for November 13th, to issue their final report?
Sure.
Did you have something to add?
Nope, I'm good.
All right.
Yeah, I'll add, no. Don't pay too much for a building, please.
Okay, let's try to move this right along, because I'm, I'm losing it quick here. Uh, we have votes of the board. We have a one-day liquor license for a shower at V.C. Park on October 27, 2018, between the hours of 12:00 PM and 4:00 PM. Detailed officer required.
I, I make a motion that we approve that one-day liquor license for October 27th.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have a one-day liquor license for the art festival at V.C. Park on November 3, 2018, between the hours of 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM, and a detailed officer is required.
I'll make a motion we approve that, uh, art festival, one-day liquor license on November 3, Saturday, November 3.
Seconding.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have requested by the Finance Director to temporarily increase the hourly rate and hours for Administrative Assistant Treasury Collections Clerk Caitlin Gilbert. So, I imagine you can elaborate on that.
Uh, yes, so as I articulated in my letter, um, the Assistant Treasurer Collector is currently on extended leave, um, at the end of which she is retiring. Caitlin has stepped up and assumed additional responsibilities in the office, um, and has offered to work the additional hours. Her position was currently 30 hours. She's willing to work the 38 hours that this position calls for.
So, we just make a motion on it? Yeah? I'll make a motion to temporarily increase the hourly rate and hours for Admin Assistant Treasury Collection Clerk Caitlin Gilbert.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Dunn?
So, the position that was roughly how much? The position that was there?
The position that was there has a higher hourly rate, so this is not elevating her to that position.
No, no. What did that person make at the end of the year, roughly?
Um, fifty-six thousand.
And this person's only going to be taking how many hours, roughly?
So, this is, this is to add eight more hours to her schedule. It's about five hundred dollars a week is the increase to her, between the number of hours...
So, we're going to come out, save it?
Save the money.
Yes, yes.
Right. That's all I wanted, to make sure it was publicly heard.
Yes, oh, no, there will be no impact.
Right. Well, it wasn't said, so I just wanted to make sure I said it.
Where's the money coming from?
Uh, the budgetary line item.
Is it, is it, the person's on extended, uh, leave, obviously collecting a salary?
Mm-hmm.
So, there's enough in that account to...
Yes, because my intention is not to fill the position at the salary that it was at. I've already done the math and calculated out. We will have room and capacity in the budget to account for this.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next order of business will be old or unfinished business. We'll start with Selectman Watson. This is on the table.
I don't have anything.
Selectman Dunn.
Um, did we get anything on the website on the Pines Project? Any, we're going to put that out there for people to join or anything?
You were not. That was not discussed at the last meeting. You guys never finished that discussion. So, you guys discussed putting committees together, but you never acted upon it. You were not ready at that last meeting to do that.
I thought we were going to go out and put on the website to get people.
The only committee we were looking for was the Groveland Day Committee. That's the only thing that was actually decided at the last meeting.
Well, can we get a website going to try and get people?
Is it your intention to make a motion to form a Pines Committee?
That's my intention.
Okay, sounds like we have a motion to form a Pines Committee. Do we have a second on that motion?
I think the discussion last time was you were trying to figure out how many people and what the charge was going to be. That was never decided.
Seconding.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so now we'll have to figure, have to discuss on what the specific charge for that committee would be.
The charge of that committee would probably be to find out a CP-C project, the future of the, the facility, and what, you know, just to basically overlook and see what the facility needs.
Right, but I think at our last meeting, we had a topic of conversation that this board wanted to take a piece, like the playground. You were thinking of sending out a survey to find out what people in town wanted to do with the rest of the pines, so that's why you actually never formed the committee, because you were still discussing ideas on what you would want this committee and what portion of the pines you wanted them to oversee.
So, then we'll back off here for a second. So, do you want to do a survey?
Yes, up to you guys.
So, we'll do a survey.
Maybe that would be best.
Scratch my motion. Let's do a survey, like we talked about. And, and we'll do a survey, and we'll, we'll discuss the survey on items. So, maybe in our next meeting, we can come up with, put on the agenda, please, so we, the survey says what we're going to do for different topics throughout the town.
Yes, so I would say everyone come in with a few topic items, and I'll send you a reminder...
Right, okay.
Of sort of a town survey of different topics in town, you would like to get some feedback from the residents.
Okay, fine. That, that makes sense. And I think that you're right. I think we did talk about that at the end of the meeting and what have you. So, let's, everyone comes in next week with topics.
Sounds great.
All right, that's it for that, I guess, for that line.
Selectman Wood, any old unfinished business?
Nope, nothing.
Okay, I have a ton, but I'm just not feeling up to it, so I'm going to reserve my right to bring this up at the next meeting. Uh, other items not reasonably anticipated, time of posting? Anybody have any of those?
I just have one.
Oh, you would.
I'm sorry.
I just joked.
Real quick. I had a resident in South Groveland contact me. He is actually a builder. He says that the Washington Street Valley Screw building, the roof has now penetrated, water's going in the building. Um, the building, in his eyes, has become very unsafe. He feels that if that, if that roof collapses in, it's going to push the walls out. If the walls get pushed out, someone could potentially get crushed. There's cars there that could park up against those buildings, and he said the roof is really allowing a lot of water to go in there, and that building, only message here, water goes in there, it could take the, the chemicals that are in that building that never got cleaned, push them back out into the ground. So, he thinks that we need to, would like to ask if we could, the state, whoever handled that project, to ask them to go or have Sam go and check the building out, but it's getting to the point where the roof is real bad.
Where's that, where's that?
I think it's owned by the people that cleaned up. It's owned by the state now, right?
No.
Yeah, that's right. You're right.
It's not owned, it's owned by the original owners of Valley Screw. They've pretty much walked away and left us with a tax burden and left the state with the cleanup costs.
So, what, did the state take responsibility of that building when they, when they took that project on?
Please?
No, so it's a superfund site that this, the DEP had to come in and clean.
Right.
But then they've now leaned the property as well as we have.
So, they had nothing to do, they, they took no ownership of that building whatsoever?
And I think that roof is pretty rotten, because I run by there, and there's, that, the shingles are just battered.
Right. So, that company, that company has never wanted to take ownership that owns that building in conservation. Who knows what's going to happen if water runs down through the roof and ruins the...
Are there any turtles there?
No.
That could help us out.
There's a water, there's a well.
You know, Phil, there's a lot of children in this area, too, that walk on by that, and they have these little stories, like that there's all this dead cats in there, and we run a risk, you know, this building's not just an eyesore, it's a hazard, and I don't know why it's so bad.
So, I don't know where to begin. So, do we try to, I asked one time for the name of the person that was, that had come before the water department and said, "Any questions you have on that site, give me a call." I wonder if I can get the name.
You guys had, because Cassandra had done some research on it and provided a report a few years ago on that site. You guys had asked some updates on, um, she found like the DEP report. It's been several years, though, now.
There was, I'm going to say probably early in the spring, the water department was having a conversation with the person that ran that project, talking about the building being vacated, getting the equipment out of the rented leased building from the church, and that person and that me, I watched it, and I said, "Listen, if you have any questions on that property whatsoever, please have anyone call me." Now, maybe they were only talking about the property, not the building, but I, if you want to give me a number, I can try calling.
I can ask.
And ask.
Well, that building, that building ought to be looked at by the...
Fire?
Fire, by the building inspector, maybe even, uh, conservation or the Board of Health or both, to see how, see how you move forward. I know the town was always reluctant to take it for tax title, because then they'd be responsible for, for cleaning it up. And you're not going to get anything out of this guy that owns the building, but it is an eyesore, it is in a business zone, but nobody wants to touch it because of the, all the hazardous waste there. In fact, I don't think, Mike, maybe you know, last I knew that, that would, nobody was supposed to go inside that building unless they were suited up.
All right, I'll move on. I'll just try to get the name from you, Denise, at one point.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask the water department. I was going to just look up and see the owner's name, but...
It was the person that was ahead of that, I think it was the final person doing the final preparation of the, the, the building that was leased out back.
Yeah.
And, and that person was going to be the responsible person from here on out.
Yes, so it's still under Valley Screw Products. And they are located. Donald Miller Jr. in Lincoln, Mass. is who is getting the tax bills and not paying them.
Right, but this person would be the person for the superfund person?
Right, right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll get that from the water department, but.
Alright.
Yes, we have not taken this property, because we would then assume responsibility.
Right.
Same thing, if we were to go in and remove the building or something, we would normally then lean the property to get those funds back. We'll never see that, so.
Right.
Are they part of that list of people who get published? For not paying their taxes?
No.
Why not?
Because we're not taking them for tax title. You can only advertise them if you're taking them.
Is that considered a brownfield site?
I don't know.
Is, not to talk about this all forever, but real quick, I'm going to be done. Bill wants to go home. But if the Building Inspector, the Fire Department, and the Health Department, and Conservation all wrote a letter and they all signed it, saying that that property was deemed unsafe, and they sent it to that person in Lincoln, whatever you just talked about. I know the person may not do anything, but.
Yeah, we can certainly do it to protect ourselves.
Try that, at least, and then I'll try calling that person that I, like I said, was on that water department meeting that night. And she clearly said, "Anything, get ahold of me, I'll do whatever I need to do."
Yep.
So, okay. No, I'm not going. I'm just going to have a conversation, hopefully. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Good.
We're going to Selectmen's Reports. Start with you, Selectman Wood.
Nothing this time.
Selectman Dunn.
I'll skip it and let you go home.
Selectman Watson.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I did meet with the Road Commissioner, the Department of Transportation, and representative for the contractor on the Route 97 project. We hashed things over. We got some things, we didn't get others. You know, in any negotiations, you, you don't get them all. But we did get some things, and we lost others, so. They hope to have everything buttoned up there by the end of the year, November. And I don't know if they've been back to do any work, but they were supposed to do, do a few things.
Did they discuss moving their equipment out of the highway garage?
No, that was one of the subcontractors, and that, that never came up in the discussion. The, the other, I did meet with the Council on Aging about 10 days ago. Brought them up to speed on the money available, and for, for a senior center. We need to move forward with, with a committee. I gave them the wrong information. I told them they were supposed to have, they should have the information for this meeting, but. No, I wasn't correct in that. So we, we need to, the people that I spoke to on the, on the former committee are all in. They, they'd like to move forward. But the committee, again, it was the same as this Elm Square Committee. They went to a town vote, it was, it was voted down, and the, the committee needs to be reactivated, so I, I would just suggest that we, again, we, we reach out to those interested and serving on the committee for the senior center to get the information to us so that we can make an appointment.
Agreed. Anything further?
No, that's it.
How about the, how about your office hours?
Yeah, what about it? I mean, generally, it's the, the second Tuesday of the month.
Ah, it's just, it's come to my attention that during your office hours, you're meeting with employees, and that there are occasions that letters have been provided by you subsequently to these, some of these meetings. And I guess is, as a, oh, I'm sneezing. I'm sorry, my bad. I'd just like to remind everyone that no one here has specific authority to act outside the board. If employees here have specific grievances, they know where to go. And there's a process and procedure for those people to go. And if there were any letters written on an official behalf, and I'm not sure how else that would be to an employee, this board would like to see those letters before it. So I would just kind of ask you to basically answer to those, those items.
Well, because the, the office hours are held here in the Town Hall, sometimes employees do step in. Doesn't mean that they come in to discuss anything. It could be just idle chatter. Doesn't mean that they're anything to do with town business. Other people sometimes come in, have nothing to do with town business. They just happen to, to see the door open, they walk in. So, just because town employees may come in, doesn't mean that they're making a complaint or, you know, anything like that.
Have you provided any letters to any employees for any reason?
No, I haven't.
You haven't?
So obviously, your information that you're, you're getting is, is not correct.
I will recheck my sources, that's for certain.
Oh, what's that?
I will recheck my sources, that's for certain. As far as Selectmen's Reports, Denise, you were at the last meeting, you might have more of a voice. We had a special meeting the other day for the High School Building Committee.
Yes, so we got word a little over a week ago that there was going to be a special school building committee meeting. The information that had been provided all through the project was that the state would not reimburse for a renovation-only project, and the building committee had been using a 40% net reimbursement rate as the assumption. MSBA wanted to clarify both of those items, that they did not want us to use a conservative 40% rate. The reimbursement rate is around 53%, and they're not sure until they actually look through the schematic design what is reimbursable and not. So they wanted to caution us in using a 40% and stick with the fact that they will reimburse to, up to 53%. And regarding the renovation-only, MSBA would reimburse renovation-only projects. So we posted information on our website, on Facebook, on the message board out front. The school distributed it to their parents, looking for feedback from the three communities on whether or not that makes a difference to the overall project and what people supported. They received approximately 800 responses from the three communities.
Eight fifty, almost.
And it was like 94.
Two point nine percent.
I'm sorry, what was?
Ninety-two point seven percent.
So 92.7 said that they wanted to still move forward with the combined middle-high school new building project. After hearing some feedback and having some questions asked from audience members, which there was a decent amount in the audience, considering it was a last-minute meeting, the school building committee reaffirmed the vote to move forward with the new combined high school/middle school, at which point the school committee also reaffirmed that vote. That was submitted last Wednesday to MSBA.
Right.
And actually, I got word today that the superintendent has another meeting back at MSBA this Thursday. So we have a meeting next Tuesday night to find out what the next steps are, and to find out the results of the MSBA meetings.
Thank you, that was a very concise synopsis of what took place at the meeting. And with that, we'll end the Selectmen's Reports. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm good, I'm good. I've said enough.
Okay, correspondence.
Want me to read that?
Yeah, sure, would you, Mike?
Sure. Correspondence, we have the minutes from September 10, 2018. We have the Highway Superintendent draft job description.
You skipped one.
I did? What did you skip?
You don't have the revised agenda.
Oh, for crying out loud.
So it's minutes from September 10th and minutes from September 17th.
Minutes from September 10th and September 17th, 2018. Highway Superintendent draft job description. Response from the Board of Health pertaining to public records requested by Finance Director for documents and information relating to the public health nurse position and hiring process.
May I comment on the Highway Superintendent job description?
Please do.
So, on that job description, you should review that to be discussed at, I would say, the next meeting. The salary range is highlighted on your job description. It is increased from what the current incumbent is making. With all of the surveys I've done, his salary is slightly below what the average is for this type of position. So I think between a combination of, he's planning his last day for November 8th.
November, I thought it was December.
Nope, November 8th. He has graciously offered to stay on, on a one-day or two-day-a-week capacity until the position is filled. I think if we go that way for a while, even through the end of the year, while we go through our hiring process, we should have enough funds in that budgetary line item to make up the difference for the new position. And then with the new budget year, we could fully fund the higher salary. I do think, looking at the qualifications, when you really look at other, not that there are many road commissioners, but when you look at even the surrounding towns, what is done with our Highway Department is more than what's being done in West Newbury, for instance. In West Newbury is a DPW. And we handle things like water dams, the boat ramp stuff. They build things, they do beaver trappings. Those things, they don't handle any of those in West Newbury. So there are some different qualifications that I would say are needed on this end. Again, that's something that can be discussed and looked at, but that's really the range that is out there. West Newbury's range was just 92,000 to 107,000. They received, I believe you told me, 24 applicants. They were interviewing last week and were hoping to make a, a appointment quickly, but that was their range, so.
Could we get them to those applicants?
I asked them to, I met with the town manager. I said, "Can you phone me the people you don't choose?" Again, they're DPW directors, so it's a little more enticing over there, but he did receive a lot of assistant DPW directors applying. So hopefully, there'll be some interest here.
Have we heard back from the state yet, or whether they've drafted a change?
They have not. It had made its way through the House Committee. It was in the Senate Committee the last time I saw. There's still an informal session, so I have reached out to Senator Towers' office just to get an update on it, and I haven't heard back. But you can sort of track it, we can track it online, where it's going.
But they were saying October, November anyways, right?
Yes.
So they're still got a month and a half before they're supposed to be.
I don't think there'll be any issue with them approving it, especially since we did have a town ballot vote to sort of ratify our decision. But I think it's just their process right now with informal sessions. So I would say look at that job description, and we can discuss that more in-depth, and what you'd like to see if anything changes.
Thank you, I appreciate those answers. Ed, look whose time it is.
I know, and I have to get back to my list. Just a few things, but. I don't know why I'm frozen. The Fire Department consultants have come out. I met with them for a while last week. The 17th, and then they met with members of the Fire Department, mainly the command staff, as most of the firefighting staff, was it an off-site training? They would like to come back and set up another night to meet with, if members of this board are interested in meeting with them, members of the Finance Board. They'd like to meet with the Police Chief, and then the remaining, remainder of the Fire Department. So I wanted to see from this board who is interested in meeting. Most likely, it would be a Tuesday night, or like late afternoon going into the evening, so that they could meet with the Fire Department members that are available. So once I find out who wants to meet, then I can organize either one-on-one time, if you want to have a meeting with them, however you want to handle it.
Yeah.
I would.
So you'd all like to meet with, I'm sure Lisa probably would as well.
Would that create an open meeting law violation?
Well, so it would have to be posted, or you could meet one-on-one individually with them. So it really depends how you want to.
I don't know if the man would want to meet.
Yeah.
That's a long time.
Same questions.
They're five nights, you know? I think we could, I think we should do it just as a board.
That's fine, so we can schedule a meeting time.
A special, yeah, Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever. Just make sure it doesn't conflict with our regular High School Building Committee.
The other item I have is.
That was MRI, right?
Yes. The other item I have was we met last week to get Pumpkin Fest 2018 rolling. So it will be Thursday, October 25th, with a rain date of Saturday, October 27th. Ed, we would like to know if you were available to have your tractor available to do tractor rides, as the kids definitely enjoyed that last year.
On the 25th?
Yes.
Yeah, it could be.
Okay. We are, so it's 5:30 to 7:30, and we're scheduling the rain date for the Saturday, because the Friday night, I, I've been told, is something at the Bagnell School. They do some walk, ghost walk.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. It's a V.C. Park.
That's a V.C. Park.
They do that at V.C. Park.
But it's with Bagnell, yes, so it's that Friday night, I believe. So we would do the rain date on the Saturday. I will have flyers available tomorrow. I didn't want to put tractor rides if Ed wasn't around, so. I will have flyers tomorrow going out to all of our sources. We've added a DJ this year, so, weather permitting, we will have an actual DJ out there, getting the kids dancing and have our costume parade. So it's, it's underway. Bill and Teresa are on the committee. We, we met with police and fire representatives in the library. So it should be another great year for our fourth annual Pumpkin Fest.
Awesome.
You said 5 to 7 on the 25th?
5:30 to 7:30.
5:30.
And that is all I have for you.
Thank you very much. This is great job. Selectmen's time. We'll begin at this under the table, I guess, with Selectman Watson. Anything for Selectmen?
I don't have anything.
Selectman Dunn?
Lance Sales.
Yep, so the last I heard, the two attorneys were sending a draft deeds back and forth, so it is in the, it is in the final stages.
Okay. And we talked last meeting about the Emergency Management Officer possibly coming in to talk with us?
Yes.
I think we're going to have Steve come in at the next meeting to discuss that.
We just had a very full agenda tonight, so.
That's good. I'm done.
Selectman Wood?
Nope.
I'm going to, again, reserve my right to bring things up at the next meeting, but I, I don't have the strength to do it today.
So, motion to adjourn at 9:23?
We have a motion to adjourn at 9:23. We have a second. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor? Getting adjourned. Thank you very much.
I think I need a few more signatures before you all.